I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Santa Barbara School Board of Education for Tuesday, January 9th. And I'm just going to take a moment here at the opening of the meeting before we do the Pledge of Allegiance to acknowledge that this has truly been a horrible, horrible day for our community. And Mr. Matzouka will be talking more about it during the superintendent's report about what's been happening in our schools. We do acknowledge what a difficult day it has been for everybody. And we thank you for being here with us tonight. I know that that's hard for people. And we did reach out for our charter school petitions that are on here to be sure that that would be okay with them to go ahead and present those tonight. And the other thing I want to let you know is that we are pulling one item, and that is item G4. That is the approval of exchange of leasehold properties between Santa Barbara Unified School District and the City of Santa Barbara that was on the action agenda. And so that is being pulled at this point. And at this moment, we were going to go ahead with our Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise, Mr. Matzouka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes, buenas tardes. Si algún miembro del público necesita los aparatos, los audífonos para escuchar la interpretación española, los tenemos disponibles aquí. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have headsets available for the hearing impaired up here at the dais, so if there are members of the public that need those, please let the board member who's at the end, whoever that might be, whenever that might be, right now it's Mr. Paredes Uyua, and we can help you with that. Let's see, next up is the announcement of closed session action. We took no action in closed session. Next is the superintendent's report, Mr. Matzouka.
So we missed a board meeting. It was supposed to be December 12th, I believe. It's been a long time since we've gathered together and been part of governance and leading the district. Just some thoughts on the Thomas Fire era. It's felt like a long time ago, but also very recent. I learned a lot about the Santa Barbara community, what a tight-knit place this is, how much people care about each other. You could see it in the, well, there weren't that many people in the stores, but when you ran into people, there just was, you know, people were kind, they were thoughtful, they were just taking time with each other. The collaboration of all the different partners, county, public safety, our partner districts, county office of that, it was really good. We debriefed as the superintendents, and I think one of the things we look back on was the constant communication, especially of our four partner districts, but even like City College, Westmont College, a lot of the private schools in our charter schools. It was nice to see us all on one page. It was really good. A crisis is always a test, and the community would let you know if you didn't pass the test. And all the comments that, most of the ones that I received had been very complimentary of the decisions that we'd made and how we've led the district through this time. So we thought that was it, but wow, the last 24 hours have been extraordinary. The initial findings from the Montecito calamity, there are fatalities, we know that. The county briefing this afternoon, I think, had 13 at this point. So let's just pause for a moment of silence. Part of our response as a school district, we really did focus on Santa Barbara High School and Santa Barbara Junior High because those two schools serve most of the Montecito, Cold Spring alums. And, I mean, it was an awkward space there because we were open for business, as we should be, and we really wrestled with, you know, what's our role? And we landed very clearly on, we should stay open for the kids who come. I mean, our attendance was down about 25% at those schools, but we still had 75% of our students. Imagine if we had closed, where would they be and where would they go? It's also a place of safety and of community, of relationship, and so school operated, but Santa Barbara High was down quite a few teachers. Because as we learned in the Thomas Fire, about, I think it's about 12% of our workforce works or lives Summerland all the way to Ventura. There's interesting Cottage Hospital, Ron Worth said in the press conference, 12% of Cottage's workforce couldn't get to work today. And people told me we have to get ready for this because of the Conchita mudslide, and here we are, we're living it. So we built some contingency plans for tomorrow. We've got principals that can't get to work, so we're covering, we're scrambling every possible teacher resource in-house. We're going to send a lot of that to Santa Barbara High. But all of our high schools, you know, they're big operations, we have a lot of teachers, so we're going to do the best we can. And the words that I'm saying to our team and to our community, flexibility, patience, and grace. I mean, we've got finals right around the corner, but we've got some kids who have just lost their homes. So we're going to have to really be thoughtful about how we support, you know, unique cases. We recognize that we're going to have a mental health support challenge when we discover the families that have been affected, and I think we're going to have to do that work with Montecito and Cold Spring School. I already talked to Dr. Alzina, and she's reached out to us because she's a little school. So we're going to partner with them, and I'll reach out to Dr. Reyna at Montecito because I think we're going to end up doing the support together.
Good.
So it's been quite a couple of months. I thought Santa Barbara was kind of a normal place. It's been anything but normal, but I've been proud of the way everybody's responded. Our team's held up well, and I think the community has responded well. So still have challenges ahead in the coming days and weeks. So we have a couple of people to introduce who were scheduled to come on December 12th, so I would love the board to meet them. And we'll start with Anna Scharfeld. And Anna is our interim assistant principal at Santa Barbara Community Academy. And Anna, if you'll come up to the podium. And while she walks up, some of you may recognize Anna because she was at Santa Barbara High School as assistant principal last year. And Anna decided to go do some consulting, and then when we needed somebody, your name popped up, and we said, oh, of course, Anna Scharfeld. So Anna's been on the ground for a couple of weeks, and I thought it'd be good for the board to just hear from her and who she is and where she's come from and where she thinks she's going.
Great. So I was told to speak a few words. I wasn't sure what kind of words I was going to speak, but I just want to say that I'm really appreciative of this opportunity. And this staff that I'm working with, they're really, really excited and are responding really well. And we had a great, today was our first day back from break because we're year-round. So it's been a really interesting few weeks here because I started with the fire and then came back today on my fourth day with them. But it's been great, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to give me this experience and love being in elementary school again, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And our second introduction is Dr. Maria Larios Horton. And some of us know Maria really well because she, you taught in our district, right?
I actually didn't get to teach here, but I was a bilingual instructional assistant 20 years ago at Franklin Elementary. That's where I started. I was 19, for sure. That's true. So, yeah, but I do know a lot of our administrators and teachers because of my former work with the county education office. And so I wanted to just to say to all of you, thank you for this opportunity. I'm back home. I live here in Santa Barbara, and I took some time to work up north and get to know our North County students a little bit more. And I brought my family with me because we're a family affair, you know? And so my husband Greg, my son Martin, and my daughter Isabel, she's a junior at San Marcos High School. And I'm really looking forward to working with an incredible group of leaders and a very committed school community to further the outcomes for all of our students and particularly for our English learner students. So thank you again for this opportunity, and I'm really excited to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome back. All right. Thank you, Mr. Matzouka. This brings us to item C7, Board Comments and Correspondence. Any matters to touch on at this point? All right, Ms. Simsmouten?
I just have a comment in terms of it's been a year, and there's some things that like, oh, I recognize that now, as opposed to what is that? So I just also want to express my appreciation for being a part of this board, a part of this district as well, certainly a part of this community and serving our school and our students.
Thank you. And that brings us to public comments on non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. All right, well, we do have Karen McBride, who'd like to come on down?
Good evening, Dr. or Mr. Matzouka, and it's just Jete and Dr. Wagon and members of the board, President Parker. I am speaking straight from the heart, no script or anything, so this is really, you know, straight from the hip, but I just want to express gratitude from our members, our SBTA members. One of our members put it very well at a meeting on Monday and said it to Mr. Matzouka and members of the superintendent's staff that we are unduly grateful to the way you handled the emergency with the fire back in December and the grace that you gave to the teachers and all of the certificated staff and no doubt the classified staff as well. And we just feel very fortunate to have such an understanding administration that we're working for, in addition to the fact that knowing, you know, I knew that I could be safe at home and I knew to home farther away from the smoke, and I thought of you all coming to work every day and knowing that it was thick here and it was so close to the fire, and you were here every day, and your communication was outstanding. And I also want to note, because I think that Todd Rickman noted that Mr. Matzouka was a leader among leaders with all of the superintendents and the emergency personnel, so I want to thank you for that leadership and for the grace that you showed in giving our staff their salary for the days that they were not able to come. Because as you see, you know, this is a difficult community to live and work in for a lot of people, and having lost that income would have been very devastating for a lot of people. So just to sum up, I just want to extend that thanks, and I know that hundreds of our members, our hundreds of members are feeling the same way. So thank you. And if there's anybody in the room that is, works for or with the classified staff, we also want to thank them for being the ones who stepped in and did the cleanup and the dirty work and, you know, had to come back to work before we did and really got things ready for our families and our staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have Lanny Ebenstein?
Members of the board, Superintendent Matzouka. My name's Lanny Ebenstein. I'm, I came down to the meeting, I was going to talk on the agenda item about the possible trade between the school district and the city, and I know that's been pulled from the agenda, but I thought that it would offer a few thoughts under public comment about it. And first, as I always do, thank you for your service to our community. These have been difficult times, and I think that the leadership that the district has shown is something that's been appreciated by the entire community. I should also mention too that Anna Scharfeld, in addition to her other distinctions, is the daughter of a former member of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, Lee Scharfeld, who served from 1981 to 1994, as I recall, and was a colleague of mine for several of those years. I think that it was good that this item of the possible land swap on the city was brought forward by the administration at this time, and I also think it's good that more time is being taken to look at it in more depth. And I was going to go through my files and send out some further information that has been discussed in the past about it. And I just wanted to say that I think there's a real opportunity for the district and the city to work together on a host of issues in terms of it's, it's not just the fire station next to La Cumbra and the plot of land next to Franklin Elementary School, but there are a number of other facilities in the school district and in the city that for many years, it seemed to me that are adjacent to some of the schools. There's a parcel next to Peabody School, for example, that some years ago was, it's an island on city land on a road, on a street on the northeast corner of the school that could be incorporated into Peabody School as a plan put forward at one point in time that would increase the size of the Peabody Playground by about half an acre. And that's a lot. And I think that there are other, there are other issues like that. I think that certainly with Hidden Valley and its forthcoming development, that that's something the city could get involved in. There's the old city recreation department, former Santa Barbara School District administrative offices on Chapala Street and Victoria, that is an underutilized facility. And so I hope that as you consider these issues, that more of these issues will go on the table, perhaps through the joint use agreement, and look at how the city and the school district can cooperate together more. I really think that because of the new members of the city council, that there's going to be people on the city council now who are very pro schools, and that bodes well for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of public comment, and that brings us to item D. Normally, we hold our annual organizational meeting in December, and that didn't happen this year. Maybe the first time ever. And so it is time for me to step down from the presidency, and to do that, we need to have an election for a new board president, and at this time, I'm going to hand the gavel and the mic over to Mr. Matzouka. He'll do phase one, election of the president, and then hand it over to the new president.
So our first step is to elect a president of the board. Do I hear a nomination for president of school board?
I nominate Dr. Jaclyn Reed for school board president.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
All right, we'll start the show.
And at this point, the new board president, Dr. Jackie Reed, will take over the completion of the organization of the school board for the next school year.
I'm very excited to be taking on this new role. I do want to just, as I said before, as I can, just to say, to take a moment to really thank Ms. Parker for her leadership and presidency and her seamless presidency, as far as I'm concerned, and I believe the board would stand behind me on that. We really appreciated not only her way to succinctly get through the meetings, but also the historical perspective that she provides to many of the agenda items, and just her good sensibility and knowledge. So I know that we won't lose her because she's only going to go a few chairs down, but I just want to make sure that we acknowledge her again. So thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
Before you go on.
Oh.
Yes. Applause.
And so we have this amazing, special gavel that she will hang up on her wall and swing around a few times, hopefully not a mess.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Thank you so much.
All right. So we're going to, I'm going to try to be very methodical and move through this as succinctly and methodically as possible, but, so bear with me if I make a few mistakes along the way. But we do need to move on, and I will now take nominations for vice president of the board, and I want to know if we have a motion.
I nominate Ms. Wendy Simsmouten.
And is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously, so let's welcome our new vice president. Give you a moment to move to the next chair. All right, so we also need a clerk of the board, and I want to know if there's a motion for designation of clerk to the Board of Education.
I nominate Ms. Laura Capps as clerk of the board.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. So we can rotate again?
We're supposed to cut young, we need them with all the signs, right?
Do we move our signs?
We could just, just.
All right, there you go.
Take your sign.
They'll be there next month. Okay. There you go.
All right, so moving forward, we have completed the election of officers, so I will now move on to the approval of the dates and times of the regularly scheduled board meetings through June 30th, 2019. Can we pull that up on the screen? So as that gets larger, as you can see the list on the screen now, typically, it is the second and fourth Tuesday of each month commencing at 6:30 PM that have been designated as the regularly scheduled board meetings of the Board of Education, and the following exceptions are listed. I'll just read them out loud. July 24th, 2018, one meeting only. November 13th, 2018, one meeting only due to Thanksgiving. December 11th, one meeting only due to the holiday break. January 15th, 2019, the third Tuesday. January 29th, 2019, the fifth Tuesday. March 12th, 2019, one meeting only due to spring break. And then, last but not least, April 2nd, 2019, the first Tuesday in April. So before we make any motions, I want to know if there are any issues with these dates with the board. All right, moving forward, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So now we need to make a motion to appoint a representative and an alternate to elect members of the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization. Now, Ms. Capps has been a representative this past year, and I was actually, I'm going to tell you, I didn't even realize it, but I was the alternate. So obviously, I didn't go to any meetings. Ms. Capps, did you go to any?
To which one?
It's to the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization.
No, I participated in a vote, but I did not attend a meeting that I was invited to.
Okay. Well, would you like to continue as the representative?
Sure.
All right. And is there anyone else willing to take on the alternate role?
I'd be happy to pick up the alternate role.
All right. So I will make a motion that Ms. Capps will continue on as the representative, and as the alternate will be Ms. Parker. And let's see, can I have a second on this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously.
And I just want to note, especially for our minutes, that this ended up being a very important vote last year, because when Ms. Capps had to vote on this, just in December, they actually required that I produce the minutes to prove that she was our duly elected representative to this committee, so they're very serious about it. I was glad it was in our minutes.
All right. Good job. So moving on, now we're, there are a number of committees to which board members are appointed. At the annual organization meeting, which is tonight, the board appoints board members to the following committees, so we will not be taking a vote on board member committee appointments. These are mostly ad hoc committees, and a number of them meet once per month, or even less, actually. So since I have a direct line to Ms. Parker at the end of the dais, I would like to start with you. You are currently on the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association, and are you okay with staying on this board?
I am happy to stay on the County School Boards Association. I do want to note, and I'm hoping that there's somebody that can come with me at least sometimes this year. We meet once a month on Thursday mornings at 8:00 AM up in Buellton. Not during the summer, it's just during the school year. And it's really a great opportunity to understand the countywide issues because you meet with, many in North County school board members are there in particular. It's extremely helpful. I'm going to be working with Ms. Talcido, the county superintendent, because honestly, it feels like in this day and age, it should be possible to telecommute into this meeting, and it just hasn't worked at this point, but it needs to. But I'm hoping that as they transition into that capability, that there's somebody that could come sometimes, because it's really important that there be that continuity. So is there anybody here that can actually ever come on a Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, or is that totally impossible, I'm looking down at the four of you? The meetings run from 8:00 to 9:00. The problem is that, you know, it's the travel, you know? It takes almost an hour to get there and back. So it ends up being a three-hour project, sort of seven to 10. And, you know, I'm hoping that in the future, that's just something that people could telephone in from their office or wherever they're at. But I'm hoping that there's somebody that might, you know, be able to come. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Capps. So just to have that on your radar, it doesn't need to be an official, like, second, but I'll contact you to see if there's some times that could come. But yes, I'm happy to do that. I don't think that I'm on any other.
No, you're not. I wondered if there were any other committees or board liaison positions that you're interested in. You might want to wait, something might open up.
I'm happy to wait, and I'll see where people are needed. I'm, you know, I look at the charter schools, I'm happy to help out if there's something there, but if there's something else that comes up too, so I'll just think of me as you go along.
All right, thank you. I do want to say that I plan to step down from the Santa Barbara Education Foundation as the board liaison, and having been a board member on the foundation, as well as the board president, and now the district liaison, I think it's time for me to step down. But I wanted to sort, and Kate also has been on the board, but I wanted to just sort of open that up for you to be thinking about as we move forward and for you to consider.
Dr. Reed, if I may add that too. We haven't treated it this way, but I really actually think it's important that that is a position that doesn't get held for multiple years, that it's one that you do for one year to get to know the education foundation, the, what their priorities are, to make sure that they're aligned with board priorities, but that you rotate off after one year instead of it being a multi-year thing. So I hope that we'll consider that too, in terms of whoever steps into that position.
I think that's a great idea because you really need, there's so much that they do, and you really don't know the intricacies of all that they do to support the district. So I agree with that. So we'll consider at this point a one-year position. So Mr. Paredes Uyua, you are currently the board liaison to Santa Barbara Charter, and I'm wondering if you'd like to continue as the liaison for the school. Are you interested in another liaison position, or?
I'm open if somebody wants to take Santa Barbara Charter. It's been a good school, had a lot of history. I'll leave it open if anybody wants to take it. I have a lot of history with Santa Barbara Charter, so it might be good, just as Ms. Parker noted, to have somebody else kind of have some experience with it as well.
All right. I'm looking at Ms. Parker.
I am certainly happy to take on that, if you're okay with it.
Absolutely.
All right. And you are also currently the second for the graduation requirements committee. Would you like to remain in that position?
I would.
Okay. And you are also the second. And you are also the second on the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety. Do you want to remain the second on that?
Yeah, I'll take second on that one.
Alright, and you're also, you're just the second, second, second. You're second on the Staff and Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Do you want to remain in that position?
I can get that to somebody else, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone that is just jumping for that? Well, we can move on, that might come forward later. So are there any other committees or positions you're interested in?
The Education Foundation would be interesting.
So, is it interesting to take it on?
Take it on, take it on, yeah.
Alright, so we got a taker. So we'll put you in the next District Liaison position. Thank you. So, we'll move on down to Ms. Capps. Currently, you're on the Wellness Committee, and are you interested in remaining on that committee?
I would like to, yeah.
Alright, and the Sustainability Committee?
Uh huh, yes please.
Perfect. And you are also the Liaison for the Adelante Charter School.
Yeah, I'm very interested in staying on that. They do meet at a time that's challenging for me, so if someone else would like to do it, that's great. If not, I will just be more diligent about trying to move things around in order to make those meetings.
Is it, if I may, is it that particular night? Because I'm wondering if maybe...
Yeah, it's a Monday, it's a Monday evening.
And Mr. Paredes Uyua, when does...
Thursday evenings.
Thursday evenings. Is that, I don't know if that's better for you, or if they're all problems at night. Yeah, she's like, they're all problems.
Okay, then I won't be super helpful that way. So, I'll stay on with Adelante.
Okay, you wanted to do that.
Yes.
Okay, alright, great.
Thanks.
Alright, Ms. Sims-Mouton. So, you're currently on the Audit Committee?
Yes.
I'm hoping you're gonna remain on that. Great, alright. That's exciting to know. Alright. You're also on the Graduation Requirements Committee. Will you want to remain on that?
I'm happy to step down from that and look at some other things. Actually, I was more interested in the Staff, the Special Education Parent Advisory, if that's open.
The, which one?
The Special Education Parent.
Oh, the one that I'm on?
Or is that the one that you're on?
Yeah, but I'm...
Okay.
I'll swap it.
Okay.
There you go. So you will take over the CPAC, and I will take on the Graduation Requirements Committee. And then, you are also the lead committee member for the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety. Do you want to remain on that?
I was wondering if I could be the second, because I'm just not always able to make that. If we could switch, maybe you're the first, I could be the second.
I'm perfectly fine with it.
Okay. Alright, so I think all of mine are taken care of. So I think we're good. Oh, yes, Ms. Parker?
I just have a question, because I want to clarify that this is kind of a, not exactly a typo, but an extra thing. There's this County Committee on the list, Santa Barbara County Education Office, and I think that that's trying to repeat what we just talked about, the vote that we took on D.C., the...
Appointment of Representatives.
...of School District Organization? Because I don't know of any other County Committee.
I was confused by that too.
Yeah, so I think that that's just superfluous, and I just want to note that that's not an existing committee. Okay.
Alright, thank you. See, it's good that we have you down at the end of the dais.
There you go.
She's not gone yet. Alright, so moving forward, we're gonna move to now Section E, the Consent Agenda. And are there any items that the fellow Board members, or my fellow Board members, would like to pull? Ms. Capps, were you looking for one?
Yeah, just, there would be the one with Capitol Advisors. What number is that?
Eight.
Yes.
Okay. Number eight, E8. Okay. Anyone else?
Item seven.
Seven. And anyone else?
I'm going to approve the remainder of the Consent Agenda, minus Items E8 and E7.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Alright. So moving forward... We are now moving on to our two public hearings, and I'm now going to close this meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education, to move to the public hearing number one, Olive Grove Charter petition, school petition. So, I just want to state that during this public hearing, we'll be listening to the presentations of our speakers, but not responding to them until we address this one in our action item on our agenda. At that time, as a Board, we will have an opportunity to respond and ask any questions we may have before we take vote. So do we have any public comment on this item?
We didn't bring anyone, you guys continue.
There you go.
I didn't figure there was... We kind of know where this is heading, and we didn't want to upset our families, and we're just here to answer any questions you may have, so please feel free to proceed.
Okay, well, thank you. That brings us to the end of our first public hearing. Alright, and now we're moving to our second public hearing, and this will be the public hearing of Trivium Charter School Petition. And so, do we have this one public comment?
I don't have any public speakers on this, although there's clearly a presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
The last person was much taller than I am. Okay. Okay, good evening. I did want to make some comments, because I haven't been here before, and for a hearing. I know that Laura has, with Olive Grove. She's gotten to go through this twice, so... Yeah, well, twice here. So, good evening. As you know, tonight you'll be voting on whether to approve or deny Trivium Charter School. And in order to carry out that function, you will have to consider all of the elements of the case. So in the Board Packet, you have the opinion of the Santa Barbara Unified Staff. And their opinion states that we have an unsound educational program, we are demonstrably unlikely to succeed, and we do not have reasonably comprehensive descriptions in our charter petition. And I can say this by memory, because it's what every single district says. So, it's frustrating. There are also some added opinions, which receive their own bullets, but they're not legal reasons to deny. So, I think we're all aware of the different pressures to limit or curtail charter schools on the Central Coast. Now, oddly, there are many, many questions raised in these findings, and concerns. And when I read it, and I hope when you read it, it should generate a fair amount of skepticism that Santa Barbara Unified Staff may attempt, or any attempt, to reach out and clarify any of their concerns or their questions. The California Legislature is very clear that the districts should be supporting and sponsoring charter schools. In these findings, there are questions asked, concerns stated, and misinformation shared. And it seems to me that if the district staff goal was to meet the legislative intent of sponsoring and supporting charter schools, they would have reached out to me. But no questions were asked of me, and in addition, I think you guys are aware that both Olive Grove's petition and our petition was scheduled without us knowing. In fact, I think it was in November. So, this isn't the way the process is supposed to run, and it makes me sad that this is the way it is up and down the Central Coast. And between Laura and I, I think we've hit just about every district up and down the Central Coast, and that's just the way it is. So, every time I go to a hearing, and I've been to a lot of them, I hope that I will persuade the Board to think this through, and to ask questions, and to really think about what they're doing. And I know that that's a lofty goal. So then I think, well, maybe a few Board members will. And that's still a lofty goal. So then I think, well, maybe one, maybe one Board member will actually think about really what they're doing. And I've actually been successful with that. And believe it or not, even though we have been denied up and down the Central Coast, the fact that I have made one person think about how important charter schools are in our educational system, I feel like it's a small success. So, clearly, we are demonstrably successful, and there's no basis of fact to assert otherwise. SBUSD staff may indeed have their preferences and opinions, and I'm always happy to discuss ideas and options and opinions, and there's so many great things we can do. But for the purposes of this charter petition, there are certain required elements, and they have absolutely been met. So to review, the Board has the opinion, and it is just an opinion of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board, or School Staff. And that review, their review, is not based on fact or logic. Now, in the audience, you have the opinion of the students, and the parents, and the staff, and community supporters, who have firsthand experience about our high-quality educational program. They choose to stay enrolled semester to semester, really day to day. And they're able to exercise their right to choose what school to send their students to. These families choose educational options such as charters and homeschooling in private schools, because they have the freedom to make that choice. At this point, I'd like everyone who's here to support Trivium to please stand up. Now, thank you. Thank you so much for coming. And as was stated at the beginning of the Board Member, I know some of you guys, Board meetings, some of you guys came in late, I really appreciate. I know there's a lot of issues going on in Santa Barbara right now, it's all over the nation and the news, right? So, just the fact that you guys took the time to come here, it really says a lot, and I appreciate it. So, this choice is the reason that promotes the idea of charter schools. Now, you have the data that shows that we're successful, and we have a sound educational program. We have a proof of students who have graduated and are re-entered back into a traditional or comprehensive high school. And I understand that the crossroads you find yourself at, as Board Members of Santa Barbara Unified, and you have to choose whose opinion should prevail. Is it the opinion of the audience, the staff, or, I'm sorry, the students and the families, or the opinion of the staff? I do want to reiterate, and I don't want to be obnoxious, or talk down to you, but one of the districts said to me that they work for the school district, one of the district's school boards. And I just want to reiterate that you don't work for the district, you actually are the boundaries for the district. And so it's a very different perspective that you have. And that means that you're in charge of this local public school district, and that means you have the authority and the responsibility to set appropriate boundaries and goals for the district. Now, as already stated, the Charter Schools Act, Education Code, Section 47605, Part B, requires that the Santa Barbara Unified School District Trustees, Board of Trustees, in its review of charter petitions, be guided by the intent of the Legislature that the establishment of charter schools should be encouraged. The word "encourage" means to stimulate by assistance or approval to promote, advance, or foster. In short, the State Legislature requires approval unless there is evidence to deny. Contrary to the, I think, 14 pages of findings, which is not, they're not accurate, there's overwhelming evidence that Trivium is extremely successful. Now, lastly, the presentation, this presentation is about the parents and students who have chosen Trivium and wish to choose it in the future. This isn't about me. This is about the right for families to choose the educational options that they want for their students. All of the time and energy that has gone into this process is ultimately about giving parents and students choice, and one of the most important decisions they will ever make. If this school choice option could be supported by you as the Board and Santa Barbara Unified School District staff members, the district just reaches a broader amount of students, and they have more educational options to offer to their families. So, regardless of your vote, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So we will now close the public hearing, item number two, for the Trivium Charter School Petition, and return to our regular meeting and to the action agenda. So our first item on our action agenda, G1, is the Olive Grove Charter School Petition for the establishment of a charter in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Mr. Matsuioka, would you like to make any comments on this petition?
Yes. Yes, this item was scheduled for a month ago. This is actually the second petition, let's see, when did, were we on the Board? Were you on the Board? Yes. So, you heard Olive Grove's petition about a year ago, I think it was in the fall. They did seek to appeal up to CDE, and they ran into some challenges. Part of it was noted in the summary about some of the findings that CDE staff had issues with Olive Grove. The data that we presented in both reviews is pretty much the same. I mean, there's maybe one more year's worth of data. It fundamentally didn't change. The things that really stood out to me, for Olive Grove to say that they offer a comprehensive program, their A to G completion rate, I don't understand how you can have numbers that low. And then, the inconsistency of the data around accountability has just been hit and miss over the history of Olive Grove. So, the Board, you've received this report really two years in a row. Those are pretty much my comments, at least guiding you about this decision for Olive Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Matsuioka. Do we have any public comment? Alright, so, actually, I'm gonna turn to the Board to ask if anyone has any questions or comments. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to kick off this discussion. I think one of the differences, when you come to our district, as opposed to many of the districts on the South Coast and Central Coast, is that we actually have three existing charter schools. And I know many other districts don't have any. We have three, and we've had our ups and downs with them. And when they have come forward for renewal, we have held their feet to the fire, and we have absolutely held them accountable for the same data that were held accountable for. And it has upset those charter communities, because people love their schools for many reasons, and schools can be great for many reasons. And a lot of times, it's not about the data that the CDE cares about, either for, at the state level, or at the district level, or at an individual school level. We are required to look at that. And it is so important that we be consistent in what we do. We've been able to work it out. Our existing charters have changed, sometimes they've shut themselves down, they've changed their practices, they've developed new ways of professional development, of thinking about instruction. But we are consistent, and we hold them accountable, in the same way that we have to for any new petition that comes to us. This particular petition, you're unusual, both for Olive Grove and for Trivium, in that there is data, that a lot of times, a new petition will come to us and there's no data involved whatsoever. There is data in this particular case. And without going into a great deal of detail about what the recommended findings are from our school district staff, they are available online for people to look at. I just want to say that there's no way that I could ignore that for Olive Grove, and I will not be supporting this petition.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any other Board comments, questions? Ms. Sims-Mouton?
Yes, just to add on to Member Parker's note, one of my main concerns was the capacity to take on two additional charter schools that we already have, and that's a huge concern for me, with regards to the capacity of our staff to be able to support two additional schools. And along with the points that was made there, and so for that reason, I had, you know, serious concerns about supporting these two, or this particular one that we're talking, but in terms of the charter schools coming to as a petition, I have concern about the capacity to take on two additional schools.
Ms. Parker? Can I just follow up on that? Because I want to be clear for Board members, that that is not a reason to deny. I can understand you having questions about it, but that is not a reason to deny. It has... It has to be on the merits of this petition, on the merits of their data. So, I want to be careful about that.
So, as I was saying, I wanted to add on to your comments, and I agree with regards to the data that's presented for, but I want, in addition, of those were concerns as well.
Ms. Capps?
Thank you. And I do think it's important, what Ms. Parker said at the beginning, that this is not necessarily, this is not a Board that's, you know, anti-charter, that there are charters, and that this is something we take very seriously. I just look at the lack of data, but then also the results of the standards not being met, and I, it's so clear that the students that have come before us and the families care about their school, and I admire that. But our job is to put ourselves in the shoes of any child that could, would go to this school, because it is, would be a public school. With, every child has to have the chance to succeed, and when these standards aren't being met, or data isn't demonstrated, it's very hard for us to know that that is what we are agreeing to. So, that's what gives me great concern about this petition.
I just want to just add on to that. I do want to acknowledge all of, I know your efforts coming many times, and bringing your staff and various students, and giving us your perspective. But I, in looking, when I keep going back to the data, it makes, it seems very clear exactly what my other fellow Board members have stated, that this is not something that we want to take on at this time, perhaps down the line, which you've been doing for many years anyway. But if you can raise up your standards and potentially provide the opportunities that we know all of our students should have in terms of the standards being met, and certainly in the data that we've received, then perhaps there's an opportunity down the line. So, with that said, any more, yes, Ms. Parker?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommended findings of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Charter Petition Report, and move to reject the charter petition for Olive Grove.
That's close enough.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. So, we will now move on to Item G2, Trivium Charter School Petition for the Establishment of a Charter School in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Mr. Matsuioka, would you like to share some comments?
Some opening comments about the, versus the Trivium program and petition. I'm a huge fan of personalized learning. Been leading that work for about six years, two here, and about, actually, four or five years in Milpitas Unified. So, I applaud the effort around personalized learning, but I found the petition lacking in some really significant ways. I think what I would say to, actually, another broad comment, you know, charter schools were designed, and are still designed, to be an engine of innovation in public ed. I completely believe that. I think our charters here are innovative spaces that we oversee. Some of my best colleagues up and down the state are leaders of significant charter school programs. Summit Public School in Redwood City, Aspire Public Schools, based out of Oakland, Rocketship in San Jose, DaVinci in Hawthorne. I mean, I personally know the CEOs of these charter organizations. I know good quality charters when I see them. And in this petition, I do not see a quality charter for all students. So, here's my comment to the Board. When we approve a charter, it's about how we are authorizing the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. All right? And we have a huge responsibility with that. And taxpayer dollars need to serve all students, not just some, but all students. And I respect the word "choice," but when a program has been created in such a way that essentially, choice is limited, and what's very stunning is the lack of English-language learners in the Trivium model. I mean, we, as a county, we're one of the highest EL populations in the entire state, and that was included as a comparison point. We ourselves are almost 50% English-language learners at some point, and Trivium is at .2%. Point two. So, when we say "choice," do all students in Santa Barbara County have a choice to go to a Trivium charter? The data says that they're not choosing. And so, by design, it's a limited choice. And so, that's the wrestling with charter petitions. Yes, do they serve students? Well, it's serving some students, but we have a responsibility to make sure that taxpayer dollars are serving all students. So, those are some of my comments. I'll now turn it back to the Board for questions and deliberation.
Yes, do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment cards? All right. So, do we have any comments or questions, Ms. Parker?
I think I have a first question, and I'm wondering if the person who just spoke, yeah, there she is, like, you're not wearing the right blue shirt, I'm sorry. If you want to come up to the mic, I'm wondering if you could address the English learner issue. Thanks.
So, you want me to address the English learner issue? We have worked very hard to try to expand our options in our program for all students. And it's always been open to all students, because we have no idea who they are when they fill out an intent to enroll. Right? So, our process is, is they fill out an intent to enroll on our website, and then they get a call, either they're on the waiting list, which is mostly for Slow County, or they get a space. So, we don't know if they're English-language learners, we don't know if they're special ed, we don't know anything about these students, nor do we want to know, because that would be discriminatory. Now, I don't know how many kids are on the waiting list that can't get in, that might be English-language learners, or ethnic diversity, or anything. I have no idea. And I have no way of asking those questions. We have translated our marketing brochures into Spanish to reach the Spanish population, and we have rolled out an entire Connect program, so that parents that don't have a strong capacity of the English language still feel like this is an option for them to do that. Our Connect program is an online program, but it's very different, because all kids that are in the class together log in at the same time. So, it is actually an online live classroom that's happening in real time, and it is really, really fascinating. And so, our kids, now, we have just rolled this program out this year, but part of the reason was, is to make this more open to parents that did not feel comfortable for homeschooling. I mean, that's really what it is. I hope that it makes a difference, but I want you to know, I don't know how much more transparent or honest I can be, we take every kid that we can take that comes to us, and we're doing outreach efforts. I just imagine that if English isn't your first language, that it's a little bit harder of a jump. It's already a hard jump for a lot of our families to go from five days a week to less than five days a week, and I think it's even a harder jump if English isn't your first language. But we're doing our very best to try to make an outreach for that.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that? Beyond translation, are there any community organizations that you've outreach to, to try to figure out if there are ways that you could target English-language learners?
Yes, we've gone to many of the fairs and those kind of, like, the Santa Maria County Fair, and I think we're in Santa Barbara, I forget what we were in with that. We went to the Parent Click Fair at Santa Barbara, Lacoumbre Mall. We've done, we have ads up at the movie theaters now for Trivium charters, so that they can do that. We have the ability to help walk people through everything that they need to be walked through. So, even families whose English is their first language sometimes feel overwhelmed by making a different decision, so we have a lot of support for any and all families that come in.
Okay. I think that's my only question at this point, unless other members have questions for her.
Yes. Ms. Capps?
Yeah, I also noticed, too, you know, again, back to what Mr. Matsuioka said about a public school and sort of the taxpayers' accountability, because that's something that we, of course, take extremely seriously, and the lack of a budget that's been produced, is that something, is there an explanation for that?
Yeah, I read through those findings, and honestly, I didn't understand them, because we use a back-office provider called Charter School Management Corporation, and they do go through all of the budgets with us. And then, I had this petition completely legally scrubbed from charter school lawyers, and I had it reviewed by California Charter Schools Association, and nobody came up with any issues with the budget. So, I would have to talk with the finance person that went through the budget, but like I said in my presentation, I wasn't contacted by any of this stuff. So, when I saw this stuff, it was too late to really try to get all the information that I could have provided during this process.
So, is, you feel as though you provided a budget, or?
We did provide a budget.
Okay.
Yes, they absolutely have a budget. If they didn't get a budget, I need to know that, but it was provided.
Yes, they got a budget.
Yes. So, the budget was in there, and it is a real budget, and we've been doing this, you know, we opened in 2011, and we've had clear audits since inception, and we've done incredibly well, in all areas financially and educationally, we are success.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I'll just follow up. I mean, I could say the same thing, again, in terms of the fact that Trivium has a data point history, and that I have to hold it to the same standard as I do my own schools and the charter renewals that come forward to us. And for that reason alone, this charter presents challenges that, you know, I would find it impossible to approve based on the unsound educational program, fully understanding that there are families that really appreciate the work that you do, and that like that option. It's just not one that I feel, as a district, that I could support.
May I respond to that? I just, I don't know, if you look at the California Dashboard, which is the new, you know, accountability program, our scores are not low. So, I'm not sure, I just would like some more information on what your concerns are.
The ones that are listed in the, in the findings that are spelled out.
Yeah, I mean, I went over the California Dashboard, and I know that we are competitive with Santa Barbara Unified. And if we didn't even exceed them in certain areas, like I said, I've done this up and down the Central Coast, so I'd have to go back and look, but I.
Yeah, I think that the issue is the comparison of apples to apples. What the district pointed out in the findings is that, if you look at our district, our district includes a large number of English learners and low socioeconomic students. And we have a much broader range of demographic backgrounds, and many more academic challenges. You should be well above us.
Our socioeconomic students, which is what we do, so, so here's a problem with comparing apples to apples, if you don't mind me saying this. So, we only have 730 students across, you know, multiple counties, right? So, we're not drawing from any one district for any amount of kids. So, take in a third-grade class, like, the third graders that are tested now for that. We may indeed have some ethnic diversity, and we have certain ethnic groups, we have socioeconomic groups, we have special ed groups, but we don't have enough in third grade for a subset. So, it is very hard for us to present the data in an aggregated amount like the state requires, because it would be too easy to figure out if we only have two third graders that are special ed. Like, you would know, you'd be able to figure out who those two kids' scores were. And so, comparing apples to apples, I agree with you, but when you don't have an aggregate of data, then you can't do that. But I have the data, and I can tell you that we do amazing work, and I could show you progress of our special ed kids and our socio-economically disadvantaged kids. And that, the data on our socio-economically disadvantaged is aggregated enough to show on the dashboard. But some of our other kids, we just don't have enough at each grade level, and that's the problem. That's the problem whenever you have a smaller school. Imagine if you only, you had to do your school separately, and you couldn't aggregate any of your test scores, right? Like, if you only had 100 kids at one school, how would you be able to do that K through 12th grade?
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to say? All right, any more comments, questions? All right, so, do we have a motion?
I move that the six proposed findings are the facts in the staff report, adopt, adopted that the charter petition of Trivium Charter School void be denied for the six reasons stated in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So, we are now moving to, we have removed G4 on the action agenda, so, actually, we're on G3.
You're making me feel much better, Dr. E.
G3. We will now move to G3, Approval of Positive Certification of First Interim Financial Report for the Fiscal Year 2017-18. Ms. Chatey.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, we did not meet on December 15th, which was, or the deadline for taking this to the county was December 15th. So, we are here now, looking at this, at our first interim. The first interim report is as, the actuals are as of October 31st. The second interim is going to be, the actuals will be as of January 31st. So, we're, as you can see, we're kind of, you know, it's pretty late after the game here, with that, we're working on the second interim right now. The most significant change in, since 1718, when the adopted budget was done in June of 2017, was the sale of the parcel tech, or the parcel of Cayo Caesar Chavez, and, through the RDA Committee. And we got an additional $2.2 million in that transaction. Now, this is a one-time fund, or influx of funds, and so, for our year, multi-year projections, we will not be adding that into it, because it is one-time for the property taxes. That means that in 2017-18, we're projected to be basic aid district, even though basic aid, or what we call now, a community-funded district. And becoming a CF school, a community-funded district, does not solve all our financial problems, but it does have it more locally. Our issues become more local than they are state-level. So, things like what happened in the fire, and what's happening in the floods, the loss of homes, that will reduce our property taxes that will be coming to us, because properties will be reassessed. So, now, we have to look more globally, or more locally than globally. So, I just wanted to bring that up to you, because we've got to start thinking about what's happening in our community, more so than what's necessarily happening at the state level. We do, however, still remain, we still get money from the state, we still get money from the federal government. Hopefully, we still get money from the federal government. They haven't passed a budget yet, but, so, we're expected money any day now. Okay, so, let's move on. So, the, the economy for the state and federal, for the California, projects and indicates a slow-growth job through 2019. When I was at the CBO Symposium back in November, they were saying that we were going to go into a recession, and it was going to be a short recession, but then somebody else would come up there and say, no, I think it's all good. So, I'm thinking that things may slow down a little bit, but I don't think that the economy is in a, is heading towards a recession at this time. California state budget depends on three revenue sources, personal income, corporate, and sales tax. And since 2008-9, the three sources have increased by $34 billion, which is good for the state of California. Personalized income tax has increased significantly because of voter-approved initiatives such as Proposition 30, and then turned into 55, which increases the tax rate on the higher income. And I always want to remind everyone in California that the stock market pays, plays a critical part on our state economy, since we are, really, the state economy depends on the top 1% of these earners. So, let's talk about some 2000- So let's talk about some 2017 highlights so far. As I mentioned, the 2.2 million that we got from the sale of Caesar Chavez due to the RDA reorganization or the dissolve, dissolution of the RDA. The increase of property taxes, our property tax growth is growing tremendously with all the new building that is going on. We will receive some sort of reduction with these catastrophes that we've had, but we still have a lot of growth in Santa Barbara. The passage of SB 751, which exempts community-funded districts from having a reserve cap, a reserve on their reserve cap, which was huge for basic aid districts. I wasn't for that until we became a basic aid district, a community-funded district. We also refunded about $32 million worth of bonds, saving the taxpayers almost $10 million and funded $1 million towards our post-retirement liability. So, so far, we've had a really great year. The revenue for the two subsequent years for 1819 and 1920, the property taxes, we projected as a 3% over the previous year. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on in my presentation about the property taxes. So let's go to page three and go over some of the unrestricted activity. So we have some changes and that's a big change, that $5.4 million. So as I mentioned before, part of that is the $2.2 million that we got from the RDA sale. The property taxes went up by 1.9 higher than we anticipated them to be. But the big one is, well, and the 1.3 is from the Education Protection, or the Education Protection Act. So what the EPA is, is that Prop 30 turned into Prop, Proposition 55. But here's the kicker on this. So you understand that the state, we do a calculation and we get a state entitlement. Then we fund locally first and then the gap is what the, the state of California gives us, right? It's called the state aid. So if you're a community-funded basic, your property, basic, if you're a community-funded district, your property taxes exceed your entitlement. So when you are, like last year, when we get really close to that, if our EPA money is about 2.6 million, so if we're right there, they will fund us EPA money up to our entitlement. They will not let us have the EPA money and make us a basic aid district. So they will only fund up to that entitlement. So last year, we only got about 1.3. So I was thinking, wow, we're really close. I don't know, you sneeze, we'll be in and out. So we budgeted, oops, excuse me, we budgeted 1.3. Well, we went full basic aid. So once you're full basic aid, they give you all your, your EPA money. So, yeah. Okay, so this is why, you know, so, and I couldn't believe it either, but I talked to many people at that CBO Symposium about with FICMAT and I said, are you sure? Are you sure I'm getting all this money? Yes, yes, yes. So we did make that correction. So that increased by 5.4 million total. Federal revenue, this is the MA, the Medicare administrative activities and the Forest, we don't book that unless we receive it. So that's what that little $32,000 is. And the state revenue is just an increase. Yeah, this is the variance during the SALT funding. We got SALT funding money from 1516 finally in 1718. So that's a good thing. Then the local revenue, that slight increase was due to, we don't usually book all of our donations because we just don't know what's coming in. Like for example, the Audacious Foundation, they are just generating so much money for us. We, we don't usually budget for it until we receive it, but we look back in history and we felt that budgeting for about a million dollars in donations for the unrestricted side of the budget was reasonable, so we upped it. That way, it doesn't look like all of a sudden at the end of the year, where did all this money come from? So let's go into the salaries and benefits. The net increase is due to the following, certificated was nine extra periods and classified were this, due to the site plans. And so in first interim, they finally have all their money, they have their donations, and then they start to budget for it. Whereas the adopted budget, most of them, and maybe this year will be different, but most of them do not have their budgets in order and have not decided when they're going to and how they're going to spend their money. Books and supplies is an increase is due to carryover now that the budget, and now the budget has been projected to be spent. So when we end the year with carryover in certain resources, we then take that money and say, okay, we didn't spend it last year, but we're going to spend it this year. Services in operation increase is due to independent contractor for explicit bias professional development and again for the site budgets. The contributions down on page five, the net increase of 1.25 is mainly due to the contribution to special ed resources for the additional 25 paraeducators. In the beginning, the adopted budget, we were hoping that we were going to decrease our paraeducators by about 25 and that just doesn't work this year, so we had to put them back in the budget. So the, at the end of, for the change in the fund balance, the Santa Barbara Unified School District entered its 1516 school year with an audit adjustment of $113,000. And you'll see this in the forms. And what happened is when we set that account up and we actually did the audit finding, we didn't click one little button at the bottom that says, don't roll this forward, so it stays in last year. This will be correct, so we, we didn't hit the button and anyway, it rolled over, it took it out of the ending balance of 15, or 1617 and put it into 1718. So that will be fixed by second interim. We're working with our financial software to get that done. So we got, move on to, to restricted activity. The local control funding, part of the increase for on the restricted side is our special education, SLPA gives us property taxes. So that is a restricted LCFF funding. Federal revenues, there's a large increase, increase in the federal funds and this is due to the 1617 carryover, which I mentioned in our unaudited actuals. And unused grants. And an unused grant is when you receive the money, but you don't spend it. So if you received a million dollars in federal funds and you only spent it half a million, you have to say, okay, I'm going to take that other half a million and put it in as revenue the next year. So that's why the revenue goes up like that. Other state revenue, we had a decrease into the state revenue due to reclassification of special education funds. They asked us to reclassify how we receive the funds and so this is a correction and you won't see this again because we'll be doing it the correct way. And then on the other local revenue is the same thing, it's the, we moved it from one area to another. Most of the restricted increases were due to the carryover amounts and the donation side of site budgets. They also get a ton of money in donations that we have individual resources on the restricted side of the budget for them to spend and track their expenditures. So that's what these increases are for. So currently on the restricted side of the budget, we are expecting to end the fiscal year with $1.3 million and that will be budgeted to be spent in the next year on the restricted So if you look on page 10, this is what's going on with our ending fund balance. The light blue is our special reserve. Santa Barbara is reducing its general obligation fund reserve level each year to the extent that staff is projecting a 10.48% reserve in 1718, a 9.67 in 1819, and a 9.27 for 1920. These percentages are excluding the assigned balances. So those assigned balances are things that we are planning to spend. So we don't want to include those in the fund balance as if we can spend them. So, and that, the components of unrestricted fund balance are pointed out in, under the mandated funds. This is what the instructional team does and that's, they have a plan to spend that $3.2 million next year. And then we also have a deferred maintenance, assigned balance of $707,000. The next page shows how this is supposed to be spent. This is a living, breathing document and gets changed quite often up, when we meet with ed services. So we will include this next time with an updated version. The next is our.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sorry.
So does this, the chart on page 12, does it tie into the?
Yes.
Chart on 11?
See the 3.216?
Yes.
That's balance, one-time funds received in 15 through 17 for 18 through 2020. So that, then if you go over here on page 11 and look at one-time mandated money, you get the 3.2.
Okay, so where does the 3.9 tie into anywhere?
The 3.9 is, is, this doesn't, it doesn't tie, and I wrote myself a note, that's okay, it doesn't tie, because I had figured it out and I didn't finish my sentence, but that, I know it's $69,000 off from the amount, this amount over here, but it's not, I, I can't remember what I figured out, but.
780.
It's 60, it's $67,000 is the difference.
It's more than 7.
Oh, it's 7, it's a 70, then it's a 707.
7877.
No, because that ties, no, because if you add the 32 and the 707, that's 39, if this is adding 3991, or you say.
I'm, total general fund assigned at June 30th, 2017. June 30th, 2017 was last, last year. This is probably how much we spent last year in assigned balances. See, it says June 30, 2017. I will go back and look at this and send you guys an email. I, I figured this all out and I was like, oh, okay, that's how it works. And then it went completely out of my head.
Okay.
Okay, so this is our non-official enrollment and unduplicated pupil count. I believe that's the, sometime in January that that gets to be official.
Ms. Tae, let me make a shot at, go back to that slide, Mr. Rose. Let me see if this jogs from memory. So the assigned balance, when we adopted the budget last June, was 3.991 million. Okay. Future assigned, okay. So now, now that we're five months into the school year, is it that we have cleaned up those expenditures and have reduced it to 3.2 million?
775,000.
And Ms. Carey, I don't know if Ms. Carey and Dr. Ramirez had conversations with you that reduced that by 700,000? I'm not seeing the light bulbs go off.
No, I don't, I don't think it is. I really think that it's the amount that we spent last year at 3.9, but as I said, I will get back to you on that. And I'll write myself better notes when I remember how to, what I did. Okay, so we're going to move on to the multi-year projections. As I mentioned before, we, we use the FICMAT calculator to determine how much our districts entitled to and then we put in our property taxes and of course, it comes out that we are community-funded, but you still have to put in all the assumptions that the state of California is doing and that's the COLAs of 1.56 for 1718, 2.15, and 2.35 respectfully for 18 and 19. So the chart below is about how property taxes are trending recently. Now that we are a community-funded district, I want to explain some things about why it's so, it's so hard to determine for sure, you know, that I talk about how we will go in and out possibly. So what happens when you are a community-funded district is your property taxes exceed your, your entitlement. So that's great. So the state of California recognizes that one time a year and they'll look at your P2, which is your period two, and, which is around April. And that's the, that's the date of when your period two is done for attendance, they say, okay, this is what, this is what you have and this is how much money you're going to get. And then what happens is they'll look at us in April of 2018 and say, wow, Santa Barbara is a CF-funded district. So then they contact the county auditor treasurer's office and they say, hey, Santa Barbara's a basic aid, community-funded district. And then what happens with the county is they take away two of our taxes. And one is the supplemental and one is the ERAF, which is Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. And so we lose almost $1.5 million right away. So what is supplemental taxes? So you get your tax bill sometime in October. So let's say they cut off all the assessments as of September 1. Okay, so they go out, they do all their assessments, they add the 2% to your homes, everybody has sold homes, blah, 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 blah. And they go, okay, that's it, we're not making any more changes to the tax bills and they send it out. Then Mr. Matzouoka on September 2 sells his house to Dr. Reed. Mr. Matzouoka sold his house for a million, Dr. Reed bought it for 2 million. That million.
Good job.
That million dollars worth of assessed value is called supplemental. We don't get that. So for the whole entire year, a community-funded district does not get that money until it meets, then now, Dr. Reed's home is on the tax roll, we get the money. So think about this, who does that benefit? Well, if we got the supplemental, it would make a basic aid, or a community-funded district a wealthier, community-funded district. If we don't give it, get it, and it goes to LCFF districts, who benefits from that? The state of California. Because the state's entitlement for LCFS are here, now it was here, now the supplemental comes in, they pay less to state aid. So it benefits the state to do this. But in the long run, we will get the supplemental once it rolls into the full tax roll. So the ERAF is not that much, it's education augmentation revenue. So that's a little bit and that's been decreasing every year. Anyone have any questions about that? I know it gets a little complicated. So you've got money going in and out, in and out, you're in. So the craziest thing about this is if we fall out of basic aid in 1819, we still do not get that supplemental because in August, the state of California says to the county they're basic aid. So in 1819, we're considered basic aid. P2 comes along again in April of 19 and says, they fell out of basic aid, they're not basic aid anymore. So we start to get supplemental taxes again, but maybe by August, we're already basic aid. And so it goes on like this until you get really heavy into basic aid and then you'll never get another supplemental tax again.
Okay, so can I just?
Sure.
So we are determined to be basic aid. So what then will trigger us not to be basic aid?
Okay, so.
That quickly.
You, we all in this room know we're basic aid. The state of California, well, once they see our first interim and they see, they'll look, but they can't make a decision yet. They have to wait until P2. That's the official time in April. So they will say, okay, they're, they're basic aid. So then the only way we fall out is let's say, the state of California just comes into so much money, they don't know what to do. And they throw a 20% on the COLA for entitlement for LCFF. That would take us out of basic aid because then we're here, because we're, we're really close, right? Plus the. Plus the one-time sale, so you got to take that out, you got to take out the supplemental, so, but you're hoping it goes up and with catastrophes, you know, so we could be like this. So if they threw a 20% on the COLA, that would go like this for us. So that's how we drop out.
The other local condition would be if our enrollment jumps, like, at a healthy rate, because remember, entitlement as a LCFF district, it's how many kids times what's your entitlement per kid. So part of, remember, remember the enrollment has flattened out, if not declining.
Decreasing.
So it's that, property taxes grew, that, that's what flipped us to basic aid. So if our enrollment were to grow at a 1% clip, we would grow ourselves out of basic aid.
So how would the inter-district, our policy impact the growth of our kids? If we have an inter-district policy, would it mean they'd actually be in the district and they're here, they're legal, I'm not legal, that's the wrong word to use, but I mean, they are eligible?
Then we'd have to revisit the policy change that you adopted, because as basic aid, you don't want to educate other communities' students. But if we were to become LCFF, we'd revisit the policy, because if you're paid on how many kids times X dollars, you'd want more kids.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'll take any questions. So Board, do we have any questions? Ms. Capps?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Tay, I just, I know it's not a huge number in terms of the percentage, but you spoke about donations, and that's kind of a world I live in. I just was curious, you said that there's, I was struck by the point that you don't really have a way of predicting, is it possible to try to, you know, sort of, first of all, I should just say, a million dollars a year is a good thing.
It is a good thing.
And I'm just curious if there's efforts, I know we don't have, sort of, potentially have a fundraiser, but is there a potential to grow that, or at least anticipate from foundation donations, sort of their three-a-year plan often is something that they provide?
So I want to be clear that just because we, we increased the budget by a million dollars, that's not saying that we already had a lot of money already budgeted from donations. So our donations are well over a million dollars, for sure. And then when you figure in the donations that are delivered to the actual sites on their own personal, we get, this, this community supports our district like, unbelievably. It's very, it's very impressive how much money we get from the outside world, the outside community to help our kids. So...
Would you, so it's a million, it was a million more than expected, or what would you give the ballpark figure for donation?
So it's more about timing. It's more about like, in the beginning of the year, maybe we'll get a half a million to a million dollars, and then maybe in February, we'll get another half million to a million dollars. And so what we did is we just looked at the past, the trend and said, okay, I feel, I have a really hard time projecting more money than we get, because it goes into a budget. Someone's looking at that, spending it, so I have a, I'm, I'm a conservative person, I don't want to spend more than we get. So we used to just hold off and wait and then budget as we got it. But as I said, we went back about three or four years and we said, okay, we feel comfortable with this number. And, and the, and the people who are donating are, are solid donators.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So again, but, well, I know, it depends on timing, but what would you say, is it a million, is it 5 million? I, I just think it's an important point for the, especially now, I mean, I heard from one friend in particular, just after the fire, and our schools are, just it was such a reminder of their role in our community and even the fact that the briefings were held at San Marcos, and so her family foundation gave money, I think in part inspired by, by, by just sort of seeing the roles that, the role that schools play. So I just, I just am curious, I think it would be a good number for us as ambassadors to have, to know that so many community members actually give financial resources to our schools. It's not just taxpayer dollars. So if you're, if you're able to get that eventually, I think that would be, I would appreciate just having that number at my fingertips.
Okay, I can do that.
Great.
All right, thank you. Ms. Parker?
I just want to circle back to community funding. First of all, I don't know who changed the name, but what a good name change.
What a good name change.
It makes so much more sense, I think it's, it's, it's just much easier to get your head around what in the heck you're talking about, so good, good on whoever that was. When we were first talking about this transition, you felt that it was actually quite likely that we would pop out of community funding for a year or two as we went back and forth. I think you've gotten a new data point since then. And so you mentioned it as a possibility, but in your narrative, it seems less of a possibility that we're going to pop out, and I just wanted a little bit of clarification. I know it's reading T-Loos a bit, but you've got another data point, so.
I do, and I think that just seeing how much the property taxes went up last year, that helped me solidify that more.
Can I ask, how much was it just in that one-year growth?
It was about 1.9 million from the adopted to the first interim.
Do you know in terms of the county, what that percentage was, like...
Oh, the total county percentage, what that was?
Yeah, they're, you know, they, they will break it out, they used to have a really nice document that I can, I don't think that they post online anymore, where they would break it out by district and show the percentage increase or decrease year on year.
Well, maybe they'll do that again sometime. They have a new property tax financial system that they, they've been working very hard to perfect, like we all have on our financial systems. So I think that, you know, I can ask, and I know that this has been asked of me before, and I will, I will get this information for you.
Thank you. But, so with seeing that though, just seeing that increase, you're...
So, okay, so here's a perfect example. I, you know, we run the new numbers and I think, okay, we're, we're going to be close, but I think we're still going to be over. And when I say close, you know, I know people think, wow, a million dollars, but in our world, a million dollars is, can go either way very quickly, as you can see in our supplemental and our ERAF. Now, I don't know how many homes were lost, and that is going to do a new property tax assessment for 1819. We will get the property taxes this year, but next year, those property taxes, if the house is completely destroyed, it's pretty much assessed value of just the land, I'm assuming. So that will, now, I know we didn't, I don't know how many homes are gone, so that will have an impact. How many were in KARP, how many were in Montecito, I don't know. Okay. So I'm hoping that with my projections too, are only 3%. So, and we've been higher than 3%. So I'm hoping all of these pluses and negatives will kind of, you know, fall out or whatever you say.
Shake out to our favor.
Shake out to our favor, that's right.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Tay.
Ms. Sims-Rone?
Yes, so make on the chart on page 15, so it says the beginning fund balance and the audit adjustment is, what was the audit adjustment, I guess is what I'm asking.
We're going to, the audit, I don't know, Lacey, do you remember what that audit adjustment was for?
It had to do...
You have to come up to the podium. This is Lacey Preston, my Director of Fiscal Services.
The audit adjustment had to do with prior year revenue that was accrued, but accrued, but then never received, so it was just an adjustment to fix the revenue in a prior year.
Been there, yes, I understand that.
Thank you.
And so, just, and then one more question onto that, you, I'm not Lacey, but you might need to, but, so it's going from 24 to 15, and then 8, is that as a result of spending assigned dollars, or?
So it, the beginning fund balance for 1718, that has the audit adjustment in it. Then you add the revenue of 158 million, 159 million. Then we are planning to spend 167 million, which is, we deficit spend 8.8 million. Then we end up with a new total ending fund balance of 15.6. Of that 15.6, are you following?
Yes, but I always, I think I had this question last, so when you say deficit spending, it's not as if we're spending money we don't have, it was because we're spending it from previous year, we're not spending it now?
Yes.
Because that's confusing sometimes, when you say deficit, you're like, okay, you're just deficit spending almost 8 million dollars or 6 million.
That's correct. And some of that is planned, because we have one-time funds that we are spending and we are supposed to spend, so that's one part of that.
Right, I would just, when you say deficit spending, explain that, because to just someone sitting in the audience, I think deficit spending means that we don't have the money, we're spending money we don't have.
Well, when you do the deficit calculation, it's revenue minus the expenditures, and then the, the fund balance is decreased, because you're now eating away if your fund balance. So if you deficit spend, you are eating into your fund balance. And if you don't have that fund balance to eat into, that's when you're in a world hurt.
Yeah, and so I get that, because I deal with that same thing, but general public does not get that. Deficit means minus and you don't have money. So maybe that can be in the notes, that that's not really money, we're not spending money we don't have.
Okay.
On that, in that respect.
Can I point something out? If you look at line 3, LCFF, pretty, some year, when we're fully community-funded, we'll change that acronym, right?
Uh, no, because that's how the SAC software reads, and it is LCFF funding, and that's, the property taxes are part of the LCFF funding.
So we can't change how we name it, but...
Yeah.
Here's my point, I just, I noticed that the difference in the projection, next year it's a 127.778 million versus this year, first interim, 126922. That's a growth of like only $800,000. I ran the numbers, it's 1.006% growth. It's like hardly any growth. So here's, here's what I'm, I want to work with Mr. Tay on. The county assessor's office should be, they should produce documents that show the AV growth district by district. And if they used to, then we need to help them get back to that, because that's a huge data point for community-funded districts. It's how we plan. Santa Clara County, we used to get this extensive report, I mean, we used to wait anxiously every fall, because it was, that's what our new income is going to be. But once you get those trends, then you can say, okay, what's 1% AV growth mean to us? What's 2%? What's 3%? Right now, the AV growth is pretty darn healthy. So I, you know, I'm going to work with Mr. Tay, but I think that's a conservative...
Well, you have to understand that we had 2.2 million in there that we're not going to get next year. So I had to take that out first and then apply the 3%. So that's why you're seeing not such a huge growth.
And then there's the supplemental...
Yeah.
...up and down that we have to weather, but the, the big picture is, we need to, we need to figure out with our county assessor's office how to get more accurate data, because we're going to pay way more attention to that and much less attention to Sacramento. We are.
All right, any more Board questions, comments?
I just want to say that from a year ago, when we first saw this, this is like so much more understandable, and that's because of the process that we've been brought through. And I appreciate the work that you've done to really break down the numbers over the past number of months and make it palatable and understandable for those of us who aren't necessarily on the financial end of things. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. And there will be more Budget 101s to come.
Thank you, and I know I will be attending them regularly. So with that said, do we have a motion?
A move to approve the positive certification of the first interim financial report for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward to, moving over G4 that was pulled, and we're now moving to G5. Approval to submit Form J-13A, request for allowance of attendance due to emergency conditions, and its accompanying affidavit. Ms. Tay, you're back on.
Thank you. So you have not seen one of these before, and I hope that we don't see too many more of these. So basically what this is saying is, once the county for the Thomas Fire announced that this was a catastrophe and it was recognized by the state, we, since we closed schools and they were all good with that, they say, you know, you don't have to make the, the instructional minutes up on those seven days. If they had not done that and we had closed, we would have either had a problem or we would have added seven days somewhere within the year. So this is what they call a J-13, it's a waiver of those seven days and of the instructional minutes. And at the end of, if you approve this, at the end, I need all of your signatures on this before we leave tonight, because it has to go in by tomorrow. So I'm hoping that you approve this J-13 waiver. Ms. Kate Parker?
I absolutely will support this J-13 waiver. My one concern, and I hope that staff are having this conversation about it, is of course that students lost so many instructional minutes and lost so much time in the classroom. And I don't know if there is some way to find funding for things like, you know, if we had English learners that were on the cusp, is there a Saturday morning class that we could pay staff to do on a voluntary basis? If we have students that are taking advanced placement courses that could benefit from Saturday review, and we have staff that, you know, that we could pay to do that as an optional extra, things like that, I, I just, I do worry about long-term consequences for students. And, and I hope that we'll be thinking about ways to mitigate that, but I completely understood that, you know, we have people now asking us, you know, we have to know what the 1819 calendar is, and there's just both in the terms of the way an instructional day works on a day-to-day basis, trying to change that, or trying to throw on extra days at the end of the year, when I know that there are so many staff and so many families that couldn't have made it, it didn't make sense. This does make sense, but I just hope that we can find some ways to mitigate it for our students.
Well said, thank you, Ms. Parker. Yes, Ms. Capps?
I'd just add, and this would be a good thing to also communicate officially if it hasn't been done so, it's just a question I've gotten on campus quite a bit. Does this mean we're going further into June? And frankly, I wasn't sure during the crisis, and so just if there's a notification that could go out, I think that would be helpful.
I think that's a really important, broad communication, just, we know it, but I think some people still wonder about it, so, good point.
All right, so moving forward, do we have a motion?
So move.
A second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. So we'll now move to item G6, Approval of New Management Job Description, Safety Coordinator. And before I go to Ms. Wagonett, I just wanted to say that, I'm just going to say this, in the light of this painful time that we've been going through, the devastation from the fires and from the loss of life, and just, I mean, to have, it's just so poignant that this is coming forward today. And I believe really it's timely and really, really important, and so I'm looking forward to hearing more from you, but thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, sorry, something stuck in my throat. And Dr. Reed, and Board, I do bring to you what we, the position, proposed position that we are very excited about, you know, it's a, it's a classified management position, full-time, 12-month. Really, the purpose is to bring into alignment our safety practices, but also to, you know, when we look at our, our district's focus on evaluating our work and improving our practices, that's, that's what I think about here, is, is someone who is skilled in the area of safety and is able to work, we just have... is able to work, we just have so many areas, you know, think about our heat plans that have come up around the fire, to have someone who can serve that role, training, organizing trainings for Epi pens. I mean, the list goes on and on. The disposal of the chemicals that we use in our chemistry classes in the high schools, making sure that our groundskeepers are up to date on, you know, how to use their equipment properly. And not that this person will be skilled in all those things and have that knowledge, but rather to organize those things. And so we bring this position forward to you for consideration, and I think with that, I'll just open up any, it up for any questions you might have about the position.
So Board, yes, Mr. Paredes Uyua.
Just so I know, how are things like this even organized right now? Is it through the principals' individual sites? Is it someone assigned there?
Generally, and as we look at the essential functions, I went down and I wrote student services, M&amp;O, students, and it's kind of 50/50 that either it's something that has oversight by student services and/or maintenance and operation. And so, and our role is to make sure that the schools are carrying out safety. So there are usually individuals at the school who are responsible, administrators who are responsible for carrying that out, but there is district oversight.
And so it would just be another layer on top of that, and that would help coordinate that better?
Well, what it would actually do is, it would shift the responsibility, I can speak for student services, things that I have direct oversight of now, would shift to this person, and really things that, time-wise, don't get as much attention as they should. But also creating things like having a district safety committee. We've had an AED for the district for about six months, but haven't been able to organize CPR training and so forth to get that operational. So it would not just be serving the schools, but also making sure that we have a safety plan here at the district office as well, which is something that we're lacking. And then within maintenance and operations, there are many needs as well.
I think this is great. This is a great layer, and again, if we could take a few more things off your plate, I think it really enhance what we're already doing, what you're doing as well, and giving you more time to actually concentrate on a few more of those key items that you're, that are on your plate now.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I actually have some wordsmithing suggestions for paragraph two of the essential functions. So let me know what you think, Dr. Wagnit, because I see this, and looking at it, I really see this as a very broad position in terms of safety. But I do think that that, it's helpful to have it spelled out sometimes in the essential job function. So my suggestion, and I would put it in the, just in the second paragraph, because I think it would then be clear for everything else. Plan and lead quarterly meetings of district safety committee and train personnel in digital, physical, and mental health, safety practices and protocols. And then just to clear, make it clear, liaison as needed with city, county, and other public agency staff and neighboring school districts in development or refinement of disaster and emergency response plans. That's my suggestion.
We'll work with Mr. Tangway on that.
Okay.
All right. Any more comments, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve with those changes, if possible. I don't know how time-sensitive this is, if Mr. Tangway objects to this. Is it, do you think it's okay to move approval with the suggested changes? Dr. Wagnit?
Well, that's my sense. I don't see that Mr. Tangway is going to, because this is a new position for us that we haven't had before. We drew from other sources, as well as, you know, we really imagine, we want to think out of the box on who may come into this role, may perhaps firefighter, former law enforcement. So we drew from a number of places. I don't see him having any objection to that.
Right. Then I'll move approval with suggested wording changes.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. So it has been our practice, since we've been a board, or actually a little further into the year of being a board, to take a five-minute break before our action agenda and prior to, after our action agenda and prior to our report discussion. So we will take a five-minute break. We're going to move now to our report discussion agenda, and the presentation of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's annual financial report audit for the period ending June 30th, 2017, and the required communication letter. Ms. Tay is making a call to bring in another presenter. Shiloh, are you there?
I am here. Hello.
Hi, just a moment. I was just about to introduce you. So usually, we have our partner, Shiloh, you can tell me your last name, I know I'm going to butcher it.
Groce Bay.
Groce Bay. She, she's our partner from VTD, and she usually comes and, you know, presents the audit every year. However, as you know, she can't get here. She's in Rancho Cucamonga, correct?
That's right.
So she's here by teleconference to go over our 2016-17 financial audit. So, Shiloh?
Thank you so much, and, you know, apologize for not being able to be there, although I don't really think the power for that was in my control tonight. So I hope everybody out there is staying dry and safe as possible. But I'll just take a few minutes of your time, go over the results of the audit, and then if you have any questions, we're still happy to take those questions from you as well. You know, our audit really does start on page two. That's our independent auditor's report. This is why we're here. It's our opinion on whether the financial statements are materially stated based on our audit. And so this is an unmodified opinion. And what that means is, is that it's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide you in an audit. So essentially, it means that based on our audit, we do believe the financial statements as presented are materially stated. So that is good. The next page that I'll just reference for you and go over, because it does a really good job of summarizing the audit, is page 99, if you are following along. Because in addition to the financial statement opinion, we also provide you three other reports in this, in this financial report. And then they're summarized on page 99. So the first of those is the internal control over financial reporting. So this report is a required report, and this is where, during the audit, if we identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure over the financial reporting, then we would disclose those as part of this report. And within that report, we're happy to say that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So this is a clean report. Then we provide you a report on federal program. The federal report is both a compliance and an internal control report. So we look at both elements of financial reporting, of federal programs, as well as compliance of federal programs. And in this report, you'll see that no material weaknesses in internal controls. We do have some reported significant deficiencies in internal controls, of which the details are following on page 101. As you can see, the report itself is still an unmodified report, which is, it's still considered a clean opinion, because the findings, if you, if you have a moment and you, and you do look at the details of that, and you read through them, you'll see that the impact of those findings was not significant enough to require a modification to the report. So it's still an unmodified report. And you can see there that the program's audited included both Title I and the child nutrition program, and both of the findings reported were specific to Title I. And then in the third report we have for you is the report on state programs. This report is based on the very, various specific state compliance requirements that are mandated to us by the California Department of Education. They basically tell us what programs need to be audited. And so for the various programs, we're auditing those of the state program. We had no findings to report, and so that is an unmodified report as well. So clean report for all of those programs. There are often times when other things come to our attention, such as when we're visiting the ASBs in the school site. So when additional things come up that we don't believe rise to the level of what we call, as I referred to earlier, significant deficiency or material weakness, but we do believe they warrant some attention to management, we'll include them in the form of an observation. And so those are within this report as well, and they start on page 17. And like I mentioned earlier, those mostly consist of comments that we find at, like your associated student body, when we go out and visit them during the air. And then the other thing that I think is important to mention with the report is, there's a separate letter that we send out, and this is a letter direct, excuse me, addressed directly to the board. This separate letter is really designed as a communication from the auditors to the board, where if there's anything outside the audit process or outside the bound report that we believe we want to bring to your attention. The two specific ones that I would bring up, you wouldn't read anywhere else, would be if we had any disagreements with management, or if we had any difficulties in completing the audit. Those are things we want to talk to the board about, and we would want to communicate them in a formal manner via a letter. So the letter is provided to you, and of course, with that, we're happy to report that we did not have such instances of any disagreements or difficulties. So that letter doesn't really have anything other than just some standard language that provides you some basic information, but nothing you should be alarmed about. So that's really the bulk of the results for the district audit. I think I'll pause there and see if there was anything you wanted to circle back on or have any questions on.
I believe one of our board members has a question.
Okay.
Ms. Sims-Milton?
Yes. First, I want to just comment and say thank you to Elena and Lacey and Meg. We did have our audit committee meeting. I was so proud to have that. And I appreciate their graciousness, as I was only really grilling, but perhaps I was. But more in time just to understand the process, how we work with our external auditors, and how our internal processes work. And a couple of things did come up for me. I want to first appreciate the fact that we have a clean report. That's an awesome thing. We always want to see that. But a couple of things with regards to the findings was more of process or procedural things that came up again for me in this audit, as it did last year. The first one I wanted to look at was on page 101, with regards to the federal program, the Title I. And so that 84,000, so my question was, so we weren't able to claim that 84,000 because of the documentation issue?
So, so there are these forms that everyone who is funded out of a title, a federal-funded program, needs to complete these forms. So if we don't get all of the forms, we, the auditors look at that and put a dollar value on those unclaimed, or those, the forms that are not provided, and that's how the auditors got to the $84,000. We had a meeting on Monday to discuss with Educational Services how we are going to do a better job at claiming these and collecting these forms by using what we call the crate, and having our federal program review person, Dr. Ronzoni, to make sure that those forms are in on a monthly basis. And so we will, I can't say we will not have this audit finding next year, but we're going to try our hardest not to have our finding.
Right. I just appreciate the fact that how we are, what corrective action we're taking with regards to this. And my second question would be that since we weren't able to claim the $84,000 with regards to salaries, where do we make that up?
Where we would make that up? We will not receive that money next year. They'll just hold it back. And so we will have to adjust our 18, 19 budget to not have a, we will have a reduction funding of $84,000.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And the second one that came up again, I think I asked last year, was regarding the associate student body, the ASB. And the concern I have with that is that I hear, and this is a question for the auditor, of the school districts that you audit, is this typical, that you're always going to have a finding in the ASB? Or is it a lack of training? Or perhaps, just your, if you could just answer that first question, is it a typical training of ASBs?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I hate to say it, but unfortunately, the reality of it is, is these are more common than not common. That said, I mean, there's definitely steps that, you know, can be taken, but I think the biggest challenges that exist with this is, you're probably talking about folks in positions who their primary job is not ASB, or they're not trained accountants. So it's often difficult to bridge the gap there that may be necessary to meet all the specific requirements we're looking for. The other piece of that, that we find often, is there tends to be a lot of turnover in these types of positions as well. So the second you think you've got everything squared away, and everybody's trained and good to go, you end up with turnover, and you're back to square one. So those are kind of the common challenges that we find with why ASB comments continue to, you know, perpetuate themselves. You know, that said, we're always, we're always willing to work with the district, whether it's from a training perspective, or whatever it might be, to try to help, you know, minimize it to the best of our abilities. You know, I know the district does have district personnel in place to oversee and monitor. It's just, it's just one of those things that, like I said, I mean, I think no matter how hard we try, I don't know that I ever see no ASB comments.
And I'm always looking for opportunity to reduce that, and we can just be the model of how it should be with regards to that. Because to me, it's concerning, because this is actual cash, and that is even a larger potential for liability if, you know, if it just seems like it's accepted, that there's not any really real implications as to correcting these actions. So that's what I'm seeing. I'm seeing it over and over. If it's a matter of training that we need to do, if it's a matter of maybe looking at, is the person who may be over and around with several other jobs they have to do, is that the right place thing for them to have? And we need to maybe shift it somewhere else. And I don't know, and this may be a question for staff, I don't know how involved our students are with regards, this is associate student body. So how are they involved in it, perhaps in training them on bookkeeping and different things, and a level of accountability as well? So those are my concerns, whether it's a training issue, and whether it's really looked at as someplace as any implications to it, meaning that if we continue to have those, it just feels like it's nothing, and there is no repercussion for it. And I don't know if we have to have these, but if I know that if things were gone, how much that would then impact our students? Because that's exactly what the money is for. So I would like to see how we can implement either better training, or begin to look at, you know, training processes and procedures to address the turnover, you know, the fact that it may not be necessarily that person's primary job. But it is a potential for a huge liability, because it's cash.
We couldn't agree more. I do want to say that there is somewhat of a repercussion, because we, when we had these findings... findings come up, I believe we got them maybe the end of October, November sometime, we did forward them to the principal. And we said, this is not acceptable, and we need to work with the bookkeeper over there. And she did go to an ASB training, which we encourage all our ASB people to go to. Once we get these two positions filled in our office, and Alana can get back into ASB accounting and helping the ASB people and their advisor, because they do have an advisor. And I think it's a really good idea to train, or at least have a conference with all the ASB presidents and treasurers, and show them what their actual role is would be an excellent idea.
Well, I appreciate that. Also appreciating the recommendations as far as training or policies, such as the auditor has suggested that. So I'm saying that in a level that I want us to be the model of making sure that we have the best, we're looking at the best, and that we're not looking at four or five findings. The other question that I had is that, do we do spot checks with it, or is this just an annual part of our audit? Do we do like unannounced cash counts?
Do we as a district? Not at this time.
You just probably don't have the staff to do that.
No.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Just following up on the forms for the Title I funds. I know you're going to be collecting them on a monthly basis now. Is there going to be an opportunity to do a spot check to cross-reference that you're getting all the ones that you're supposed to be getting at least once before we're audited again?
Yes, there is. So monthly, each principal gets a list of all the people that are being funded out of our financial system, out of Title I, or any title, any federal funding. And therefore, they should have a PAR report for every single one of the people that shows up on that list. So I think we agreed at Ed Services last Monday that we will meet and discuss this further, and train the principals again, and the people who will be collecting the PAR, and educate them on how to get it into the crate. Because the crate is just the place where we put in all our federal program monitoring documents, so that when we get audited by the federal programmers, we can, we have it all there. So it's the logical place to put them, because the state is looking for the same thing.
Okay.
All right. I just want to reiterate then what my colleagues have said, too. I think if there's a training plan, if there's, you know, it's situated, if there's accountability, and there's a process that's in place, that we just all know this is what happens, then it becomes more of a common thread that can be followed. And so I would just agree with what they have to say in terms of how we might make those changes and make them more solidified. So that said, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, this report. Caught myself. We have also, we're going to move on to H2. We still have our phone call consult. Moving now to the report of the Santa Barbara Unified District's Measures Q and R for 2010 and I and J for 2016 financial and performance audit reports for the period ending June 30, 2017, and the required communication letters. Ms. Chatey?
So I will have Shiloh go over these four reports with you also.
Okay, great. So I might just ask, is there a preference? Would you like me to go through each one individually, kind of summarize them as a whole together? Is there a specific preference that you would like to hear the results of these reports?
Shiloh, I think it would be good with summarizing it.
Okay. And that's probably the easiest, because with each of these reports, what I will say is, what you're going to get is a consistent format. Each of the measures is required to have both a financial audit and a performance audit. As you're aware, Measures Q and Measure R are the ongoing existing bonds. And then Measure I and Measure J are the two new bonds that just started for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. So each one, the financial statements, as I talked about in the district audit, the goal of the financial audit is the opinion on whether the financial statements are fairly stated. So for each of the four measures, they were all unmodified opinions. And as I mentioned, that's the highest level of assurance, so clean reports for the financial statements. None of the measures had any findings specific to the internal controls over the reporting of each of the individual measures. So those reports on the internal control are also clean reports. Now, when you move over to the performance audit, each of those has a performance report. And if there are any noncompliance with the bond language, so with each one of those, what we do is we look specifically at the ballot text that exists for that measure, and we test the expenditures to ensure that they are in accordance with that ballot text project list. And so with each of those, the performance report would identify if we had any exceptions to compliance, and they were all clean. So there was no exceptions to compliance for any of the four measures on the performance report. So no findings there either. And each of them also has a communication letter. And as I mentioned with the district, this is the letter where any pertinent information that we want to share with you outside of the audit report itself, we would include in this. So difficulties in performing the audit, disagreements with management. And as you read through each of those letters, I think you'll be happy to see that we have a pretty consistent theme, where we didn't have those types of issues during our audit. So that sums up the four audits.
All righty then, that sounds like some good news. Any questions or comments? All right. So we will, thank you, Shiloh.
Thank you, Shiloh. Bye.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
All right. So now we will move on to H3, to the Annual Williams Legislation Report 2016-2017. Mr. Matsuka.
So this is a, is it quarterly, I believe? I think it's quarterly. So it's just a requirement that we report to the board that facilities and instructional materials are in good supply, in good condition across our district.
All right. Any questions, comments, board? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item H4, the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Youth Services Specialist Internal Evaluation. And Ms. Wagonett, and I just would like to say that I know a lot of work went into this process and this evaluation, and that I know that we as a board had asked for, you know, an evaluative study to be done on the programs that were in the district to ensure that all students are getting what they need. And so I really appreciate this report and the ongoing process that you are moving forward with to look at all of our programs in this way, and as well as including these evaluation and evaluative reports. So, Ms. Wagonett.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Board, I do bring to you this, first, as Dr. Reed said, the first of the reviews that you requested. And I use the term evaluative. I noted in my narrative that this is not scientific research that was done, but rather, I bring to you some data of interest for the purpose of discussion. It was data, the data that was selected was specifically based on questions that I and other members of the school district had. And so with that, we will dive in. So just starting with the background, CADA is the largest of our community-based collaborations in terms of what we do in student services. And this collaboration dates back, I looked around, don't see any hard and fast date. CADA itself, before it was CADA, was known as Klein bottle. Klein bottle exists when I was a student, but, which is a long time ago, right? And then it became CADA in the 1990s. I know that when I came back to the district in 2001, the youth services specialists were in place. And so we're looking at about 20 years, or close to 20 years, of this program being in place. And the components of the youth services specialist program are the Reconnecting Youth Course, which I'll talk about in more depth in a moment, the Super Program, which is substance abuse parent education, which is highly recommended. We like to think mandated, but it's, we don't have teeth, but we highly recommend it for families. And then also, within the schools, the youth services specialists conduct, in the last few years, what are called brief interventions, when a student is suspended for drug and alcohol infractions, they do an assessment of that student. And then finally, the YSS also conduct fighting back activities. Those are your red ribbon weeks, town hall meetings, basically general activities, drug and alcohol awareness activities in the schools. So the data questions that chose to look at were these. Do students participate in, do students who participate in RY see improved academic achievement? Do students who participate in RY, again, Reconnecting Youth, see improved rates of school attendance? How does participation in Reconnecting Youth impact alcohol and other drug-related suspension rates? And then specifically related to the Super Program, what is the participation rate of families who are recommended for the program? So Reconnecting Youth, the curriculum itself was developed over 30 years ago. It's a nationally recognized program, and it is actually in place internationally. There have been over 250 third-party evaluations of Reconnecting Youth. And while there have been positive outcomes found for Reconnecting Youth, there has been, there's some concern because those outcomes are contradictory. I think most important to our work is the fact that in the 20 or so years that the YSS have been working in our schools, there has been no third-party evaluation of its effectiveness. And so, again, while this is not scientifically-based research, I think the data starts to answer some of our questions. When we look at the data, I provided that to you in the narrative, looking at question number one, do students who participate in Reconnecting Youth see improved academic achievement? And really what we found was that it's inconclusive. During the year that students took RY, 52% of the students saw a decrease in their grade point average as compared to the previous year. 46% saw their GPA increase. So they saw it increase, but they saw it increase less than one grade point average, or one grade point. And 1.7% saw their GPA increase more than one grade point. It's important to note, when we're talking about this, that this is amongst students who had GPAs ranging from 1.94 the year before they took RY, 1.88 the year they took RY, and then actually, overall average was 1.81 the year after taking the course. So we're not seeing that Reconnecting Youth was having any significant impact on student GPAs. A little bit of a bump during the year that they took the course, but that was kind of a moderating effect during that year. Going on to the second question, do students who participate in RYC improve rates of school attendance? If I can find my statistics here.
Pardon me, but could I ask that we forward the slides so that it's where you're at?
I don't have the statistics on the slides.
Is that page two?
Yes. If you want to look at page two or the appendix, you'll have the data there. The year before taking Reconnecting Youth, nearly 22% of students were chronic absentees, so the year before. The year they took RY, 29% of students were classified as chronic absentees. Now, what we have to note is, many students who are referred to the course are referred because they're at risk of dropping out. And so if during the first semester, they have, you know, they're chronic absentees or truants, they'll be referred during the second semester. But then when we look at the year after, we see that that drops down to just 23.2%. So they actually ended up having a higher rate of absenteeism than they did the year before taking RY. Moving on to the third question, how does participation in Reconnecting Youth impact alcohol and other drug-related suspension rates? The year before, 24 of the students, and I should say, this is out of 298 students, grades eight through 11, who had taken Reconnecting Youth over a three-year period of time. 24 of them had been suspended the year before they took the course. 44 were suspended the year they took the course. And again, that could be because they were referred to the class because of their suspension. And then finally, the year after taking the course, we found that 26 students received suspensions after taking the course. So moving on to Super, which is the second major responsibility of the YSS counselors. What I found was, if you go on CADA's website, they make some pretty significant claims about the Super Program. That students who participate in Super show statistically significant improvement in overall drug knowledge, parent adolescent communication, home self-esteem, perceived harm of alcohol and marijuana use, and actual alcohol and marijuana use. Yet, to our knowledge, and I've been working with CADA in many roles for the last 17 years, there's no evidence of third-party evaluation. So we don't know what these claims are based on. There are also claims involving parents, that there was overall improvement in parents' drug knowledge, parent adolescent communication, parental monitoring of students, et cetera. And again, no third-party evaluation. If we look at the data points, I really only looked at one data point because I was very interested in it, because anecdotally, what I had been hearing over the last few years, and then actually my own experience going back as a site administrator, was that many families either never started the program, or they started it and didn't complete it. So I wanted to look at the school-by-school completion rates. And what we found was that the average completion rate for all schools for the three years that were reviewed was 71.8%. So we had nearly 30% of families being recommended, but never completing the program. And these are families where the student had been suspended for a drug and alcohol-related And I do want to note- And I do want to note that of the, of those families, and actually, I have the wrong data in here, but it should say 29.2%, that are, that does include families who, who started the program but didn't complete it. And I think, or actually, I know from talking with families, that one piece of that is, is that if, if a family misses a session, it's four sessions, they're required to start all over again. So, let's say you've done three, you missed the fourth, you have to start over again. I did start working with CADA on that because, you know, we have families, life happens. Parents get called into work, or they have an ill child, and to have them start over again was difficult. So, and, and CADA was willing to look at that practice. So, in summary, really, what I found was, and this also-
Ms. Wagonette, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So, when they started over again, do they have to pay an additional fee?
Families don't have to pay for, for Super.
Okay.
We do have an agreement. We pay-
An additional fee?
No, we pay a set amount of $15,000 per year to provide the Super Program.
Okay.
We pay 270, 290 total, 15,000 of which is Super, and the rest is the YSS program to CADA to provide this. But we don't pay if they have to start over. We pay 15,000 whether 30 families take it or 300. But what we really found, and I do have to say, you know, if you go out and you talk to site administrators, and myself included, my experience was, love having the, the YSS there. They become important parts of the staff. They, as people, are valued. But the, this program really might, is that it's moderating rather than curative. We're not seeing, it's great to have students have a place and a person they can connect to, but we're not seeing the therapeutic impact that we would like to see from these programs. And I think the fact, I didn't bring the California Healthy Kids Survey into this, I really could have, but that is, we really, considering we've had this program for 20 years, we haven't seen our rates of drug and alcohol use decline, including the use of drugs and alcohol on the school campus. So, my recommendation is that if there is, before there's any continued collaboration between the school district and CADA, that submission and review of a third-party research be submitted for that, for the purpose of making a decision on future relationship. All right, any questions?
Ford, Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Dr. Wagonette. That was, that was enlightening. I mean, I wish it were clearer than, and I'm, I'm sure CADA would wish that it were much clearer. One question I have, I'm, I, I think I recall from their past presentations that they survey the students and parents, and that's probably where they're getting their data from, you know, from internal surveys.
Right.
Have we ever surveyed the students that are in the class, or has it only been from their side?
We have never surveyed and done, done survey research of the students. We have certainly done kind of pseudo-qualitative research, but, and definitely anecdotal research.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paredes, Uyghur?
I just, first want to start off with, thank you for doing this research. Again, as you noted, wasn't completely scientific, but I appreciate having some data points, and even just looking at the suspension rates, the alcohol or other drug-related suspensions. That's, that's, that's really important, and I think it's, it is really important to put their feet to the fire, as Ms. Parker said earlier, because we want to make sure that this is a program that, that works for our students. And I know I've mentioned it before, and I'll keep harping on it until we see a number, but $290,000 is what we paid directly, the in-kind services. Because again, I remember how much we paid through Calc, or how much in-kind was our office space for Calc, I can only imagine how many, what, how much space we're giving them as well. And so, to make such a large investment in something that we've been doing for almost two decades, you know, it, it needs to be taken seriously. And even something like this, if, if this doesn't spur them to do their own third-party research, I, I'd be really hard-pressed to want it, personally, to want to support a continued relationship with CADA. And again, I have the same relationships with a lot of the YSSs. I've known that some former tutors of mine, I've known the staff there, and I know only one-on-one, absolutely fantastic people, but if they're not doing the therapeutic work for our students, it's basically hangout, it's a club for them to hang out. And we can do that, but not in, not with the goals in mind that we want. And so again, I, I thank you for, for doing the research here and presenting this to us tonight, and I look forward to any other, any future conversations you may have and can share with us, that you've had with CADA, or any of the YSSs, or maybe even any surveys that we may conduct with the parents and students. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Capps?
Yeah, I'm so glad that this evaluation was done, even though the results are difficult. The, the point that stood, stood out to me the most was the chronic absenteeism, that that actually decreased, because that, that was tough to swallow. Just thinking through a program and the benefit, as you said, Dr. Wagonette, of having a person and someone who's looking after you, and making sure you sort of don't fall through the cracks, I could see that academics might take a little time to turn around, but to me, the fact that, it's just alarming that, that during the program, it actually, the absenteeism went up at a time when these, our students are now supposedly trying to, you know, getting more care and more attention. And so, it just raises alarm bells, and it's that we're, we're feeling, and so I definitely support the recommendation that more evaluation is needed for us to continue to support this program.
So, I would agree. And also, so I guess this would mean that we could probably bring it back as an action item for having that evaluation, third-party evaluation study done, or is, what would be the next step?
Well, I, I actually requested third-party research from CADA, it was probably about 10 months ago, and was assured that they would be embarking on that. I checked back in with them last month and asked, let them know that I was bringing my own data forward, and asked if they had that info, and did not hear back from them. So, I don't know that we can require them, but we can certainly share with them, and that was, that's my plan, is to talk with them about, you know, moving forward, where we need to go.
Okay, well, thank you, and we look forward to hearing what they say. I mean, I think it's important to think, to note that this is a 20-year program, and so sometimes you have to kind of, you know, ramp it up and, and see some changes. So, thank you for all your work. All right, we will now move to item H5, Mental Health, Request for Proposals. Ms. Wagonette.
While she's finding the next page, in a way, this RFP is the response. And, you know, I've worked in multiple settings, community partners, sometimes over time, they lose focus. And, you know, 20 years is a long time, and, you know, it's, it's important to have community relationships, it's also important to have community results. And, you know, I think where Dr. Wagonette examined, it's, it's the metrics that were measured as a school district, it's attendance, it's academics. I mean, you know, if you survey kids, I know what they'll say. I love my counselors, I love the support. Of course they would, but what are the, what are the real outcomes? That's what has to show, so. So, I appreciate Dr. Wagonette, because I know this has been a lot of work, and this RFP took a while to create, because this is a, it's a big message that we're sending to all of our support providers, that you need to up your game. And it's got to be research-based, and how are you going to demonstrate results? Because that's what we need to be as a school district.
Thank you. So, Dr. Reed and Ford, I bring to you, ultimately, it will come down to request, I'll save that for the end, but information on a mental health request for proposals. As I have shared with you over the past, well, since really beginning, even before we knew that we had a crisis going on in, in our high schools, and that we really saw a need to improve our, our mental health services in schools. And that's a difficult, it's, it's really been a process, because finding, finding our place in mental health is, we're in the business of educating students, and I got into a, a bit of a philosophical discussion with a, a community member the other day about, you know, what is our role? And I think we definitely have a role in, in safety and health. We do that in all sorts of ways, but it has to be our community coming together to solve a problem. And so, I think what this RFP represents is Santa Barbara Unified School District making a strong statement about what role we want to take, and that is to construct a continuum of school-based mental health in our community, to be part of the solution with community-based organizations. So, we, we know that our students have a diversity of mental health needs. Tonight, as we sit here, my first, you know, role tomorrow is to start working on the mental health response to, to the horrible events that have occurred. And, and that's, you know, an acute situation, but some of those, some of our students are going to have, they're going to be impacted in a, in a chronic way. So, that's one example. We have our students who have been impacted by changes in immigration policies. We have students who have legitimate mental illnesses that need to be addressed. We have students whose families are breaking up, and students who have situational depression and are sad. We just have the, the gamut. And so, and we had the increase in suicide attempts last year that we saw, and I'm, I'd like to say I'm happy to say that the, those numbers are down this year because of a lot of the efforts, but they're still higher than we want them to be. And so, we have, we have not acceptable rates of alcohol and, and substance use amongst our students. But we, we are a community that is rich in, in resources. So, the question now is, who are we going to partner with to build this continuum? So, I'd like to describe the services that we're looking at. We want a comprehensive, integrated, school-based counseling program. I am proposing that we put out two separate RFPs, one for preschool through grade six, and another for grade seven through 12. This will require licensed therapists who will utilize what I call a concierge approach. We've started, we are piloting the work with Family Service Agency this way, this year, and it's going well. Because what we can't have is whoever we partner with saying, "We own the solution. We are the one community-based organization who can serve youth." We need a partner who will say, "We're going to assess, we're going to do one-on-one and group counseling in the schools, but you know what else we're going to do? We're going to refer out to other agencies. We're going to refer out to Pacific Pride, and Calm, and CADA, whatever that student needs." And so, we'll, we'll be looking for that. We estimate that we will have approximately 350 referrals and assessments done preschool through six, and 500 referrals and assessments done in grade seven through 12. So, we'll be serving over 1,000 of our students each year through this, these programs. So, the expected services and outcomes, we were talking about evidence-based. This RFP is going to require that the organizations let us know, one, is what they propose evidence-based, and then later on, we'll talk about how are they going to be checking for evidence that it's working. We're looking for collaboration and leadership. You know, Carrie and I had a good conversation about have, bringing together a partnership to construct a school-based counseling model that works for Santa Barbara, that fits our, our needs. And so, we'll be looking for the organization, or organizations. These RFPs allow, it would allow two organizations to come together and create a proposal together. And so, we're not, it, it could be more than one. Service, can they provide the services? Do we really feel that they've shown that they can, can provide the services and meet the expectations that are laid out in the RFP? Also, we're looking for staffing and training. Can, it's really important that these RFPs show how the staff will mirror our students. Will our students see themselves reflected in the therapists? What professional development will the organization provide to ensure that, that their professional abilities stay top shelf? And how, what will be their accountability to the school sites that they work in, and how much of a fit will there be? Will they be able to, to work well and be a part of each school site team? Put this in for Meg, I'm just kidding. We want an itemized budget, and they want, we want to know what the scope of services will be, we want them justifying their budgets through line items and narratives. Program evaluation, as we talked about before, is it research-based? But also, program evaluation, I've been able to do this through FSA this year, we developed a referral form that, through Google Docs, that spits out an Excel spreadsheet. So, I'm actually able to eyeball what's going on, and take a look at, you know, when are students being referred? How quickly are they being assessed? What are they, you know, what's the outcome? And so, that's the informal sort of process, but also, meeting with us monthly, site administrators and myself, to check in and see how things are going. So, I'm proposing that there be a release of these RFPs on Friday, the 26th of January. The deadline for submission will be the 23rd of March, right before we leave for spring break. The intervening time will be an opportunity for organizations to ask questions and receive responses. Proposed contract date will be the final board meeting in May, and there will be a report brought to you the beginning of May, and then approval the next board meeting. So, it's my recommendation that the governing board of Santa Barbara Unified School District approve the January 26, 2018, release of the two mental health RFPs. And with that, I will open it up for your questions.
All right, Ms. Parker?
Thank you. I think that this is a really important step in the right direction. I'm just really simply going to ask about the funding source and how it ties in with current spending.
I don't know.
Thank you for your honesty, Dr. Wagonette. Thank you for your honesty, Dr. Wagonick.
We currently fund, well, you know, $290,000 to CADA, our elementary schools also. We have, you know, I think of it now, we have a patchwork quilt of funding. That is primarily funded out of the LCAP, so this will be an LCAP discussion. This is something I'll be working with cabinet on in terms of funding. But, purposefully, part of the construction is seeing what the organizations bring in terms of their budget. What will they bring to the table? How much can they provide? And so, deciding to not play fast and loose, but see, see what comes, see, see what's brought to us. And then I do ideally down the road, and the reason why this is a one-year RFP is the idea that if we have a strong collaboration and a really good partner, then we can, and we have an evaluative process that's meaningful, then we start going for federal and state grants, long-term, federal and state grants. So, that's, that's the vision for this.
Okay. Thank you. And the idea is for this to come back as an action item on our Tuesday, the 23rd agenda for releasing the 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would add an experience in past districts. It's important for the sites to pay a portion of this. Not a lot, they don't, I mean, they don't have a lot of site funds, but there's a lot more ownership of the, I would say, the collaboration with the outside therapists if they have to, you know, put in some of their site money. If it's just, if somebody else pays for it, that, you know, people don't own it as much. So, I, I think we have to ask school principals, you know, "Is this important to you?" "Absolutely." And we'll just ask them to chip in something so that they're part of the solution.
And I would say that, you know, our, our collaborations we have now, the organizations, whether it be FSA, CADA, AHA, they, they do put their own funding in, so.
Mr. Paredes Uyua.
A few questions. So, with this RFP, whoever comes in with this RFP, whether it's one per contract, whatever, would this be in lieu of current therapeutic program partnerships that we have or would this be in addition to those?
We are wiping the slate clean. We're starting over, taking apart the patchwork quilt and building something new.
Phenomenal. And then I noticed in one of the slides it said licensed therapist. I just was wondering, because I know some of the programs that offer therapeutic services here in Santa Barbara will have a licensed therapist, but then the, the people going out to the sites will normally be MFTIs. Is that something that we've made an allowance for or?
Absolutely. And, and that's written in the RFP itself that, that they do have to be in their past, past thousand hours, I believe. So, it's that, it's a special distinction. So, we don't want someone who's a brand-new.
Just came out of school.
Right. Not that they don't have, that doesn't have value, but certainly, so it's a licensed marriage family therapist or licensed clinical social worker, yes.
Okay. That's, that's awesome. Good to know. And then also, would it be like an expectation or maybe, just maybe an added bonus if these, these organizations were able to give some training to our staff as well? Cause I, I know we've had conversations with the Health and Wellness Center on our campus, SBCC, about doing some sort of training during in services for, for our staff so we're able to identify situations, not necessarily, obviously, give any kind of therapeutic service, but just to be able to say, "You know what? I'm seeing a couple of red flags with, with Johnny and maybe I should refer him or her over," as opposed to, "This kid hasn't been showing up to school for months, maybe it's now, it's time to refer over."
Absolutely. Yeah, that's written in. And that's when I said, you know, "We're really looking for who can work within the, within the site to become a part of the," you know, feel like, when I go to work, I go to work at Santa Barbara High. I'm technically employed by X organization, but I'm part of the staff and so as part of that, providing support and training as needed.
Okay. Phenomenal. Thank you.
Ms. Simms-Moten.
Yes, and again, thank you for this. And I have a couple of questions. So, with regards to the providers, are there, are you looking for local providers only or are you willing to go outside the county to have someone that they can provide the service?
We'll extend it out into Ventura County is how I imagine it, Santa Barbara and Ventura County. But really, we want someone local who can meet with regularly and, and really interact with, yeah.
And then my second question, you've said it both research-based and evidence-based. Is there a difference and is there a bonus to being able to do both or is one more important than the other?
It would be, I mean, interchangeable.
Are they?
So, evidence-based via research.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. I, I think your counseling background has come through very loud and clear. And I was thinking about what Ms. Capps said earlier about funding and, you know, local funders. And now, in the, in the, in the passion of the moment that we are, find ourselves in of this destruction and, and pain and sorrow, it, it really would behoove us to maybe move and try to find a partner right now because we have this potentiality of challenged mentally, mental health issues with students just right here from the fire, from the mudslide. So, I mean, there might be some local funder that would wanna step forward and, and be a part of this.
I, I would anticipate absolutely and I think separate from the RFPs and the ongoing work, you know, our, another piece of the funding, of course, is, you know, mental health and, and really addressing the issue of mental health has gotten the, the attention of our local philanthropists. They are behind this. If, if we need, that support is there as we launch this. Long-term, we'd love to not have to go ask for, for the funding, but I, I would think it would be there. But in terms of this disaster, the fire and the, and the flooding, absolutely. And we do have those connections and we have folks, we're being, you know, 50% funded for the FSA pilot through Bauer Foundation. And so, it's there and we should do that.
Well, I also appreciate the seed because you planted the seed earlier in the year, you know, last year really about what we needed to be doing around this and to have taken it to this level of really looking at how we could approach this and framing it, I think is really, really powerful. It's interesting, I literally two days ago came across a research article from, in Western Australia, did a whole study, national study on this. And they uncovered the fact that if they supported mental health issues, they would alleviate, if not at least lessen, student absenteeism and then totally, you know, impact the achievement gap. So, there's so many different ramifications as well. And in my class, just last night, I had a student say, "Well, what is," just asked me out of the blue, "What is the district doing about mental health? Are they doing anything?" I'm like, "Well, actually, you should come to the board meeting." I did not see her here, but, but you know, it's on the minds of, of students and, and so I think it's really relevant. So, thank you. Yes.
I just wanna echo that and you started by, it's, it is just so poignant that we're talking about this right now. I mean, our, our students have gone through something so dramatic, for many of them, I'm just aware of it because of my own son, this is sort of, the fire was something that will, will stay with him for a long, long time and all the questions and now to have this tragedy today. And, and just to think that, again, the schools are our anchor, really our anchor in their lives and so I just, the timing of this is just wonderfully poignant and, and so necessary. And you just think about what kids are going through, what a scary world it is to be a teenager or a six-year-old right now. And so, the more, the more of this, the better. And I just, I'm thankful that you're putting such intention around it. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Still a hand.
Mr. Paredes Uyua.
I know Mr. Matsuka and I have talked about, he's done something similar and I was just wondering if you wouldn't mind commenting.
Sorry. I know we talked about on other occasions that, that you've seen other RFPs for mental health services and I was just wondering if you wouldn't mind commenting on some of the results you've seen?
Well, Dr. Wagonick, it's, is way better. But I, I think the process of a school district putting out an RFP in, in one district, it really was challenging a long-term status quo environment and, and it was upsetting to the local providers. But, we were losing kids. I mean, lives were at stake and, and it dramatically changed the environment. My last district, Milpitas, had virtually no mental health support. And so, it was just, I mean, it was a much easier environment to, to build it in. Budget was the challenge there, but once we saw the results with students, it was, it was pretty easy for the board to make those financial decisions year after year. I am mindful about the, the right level of investment. You know, we're, we're not a mental health agency. We're, we're an educational agency. The thing is, we deal with kids' lives in our schools and it comes to our, it comes to us. And I would say for a district of our size, a budget of 162 million, I mean, there's an appropriate amount for us to invest and we don't need to put a dollar amount on it. But, boy, the, the workload on educators in schools has increased the last 30 years. I mean, we didn't talk about mental health in the eighties and the nineties and then, but boy, the, the world's just a hard place. And I think the community looks to us. So, this is clearly the right step. So, thanks for the question.
So, Dr. Wagonick, you're letting go of the safety piece and with the new hire potentially and taking on a whole new.
It's a big deal.
Project. So, thank you. So, moving on to item I, I will now return to the remaining consent agenda items. And so, I believe we have number seven, Ms. Simms-Moten, approval of human resources Mr. Torina is not here, but Mr. Matsuka?
Yes.
Speak to that.
Respond to questions.
I had more of a comment than a question. I was just noticing that there's quite a few employers that are retiring. It's a long-term, like 32 years and I was just wondering what our succession planning looked like. Like 32 years, I believe? 34 years, 20 years?
Oh, you're down probably certificated retirements, yeah, teachers. So, this, this is the time of year where we ask our teachers to let us know. There is a, I would say, a modest financial incentive to let us know by January 19th. It corresponds with the last day of the fall semester that a certificated staff lets us know they receive a $1,500 stipend on their last paycheck. Now, this, this data rolls in pretty steadily from January until, sometimes till June. My hope is that we don't hire as many teachers as we have been. It's been, the turnover is just too high. Succession planning, we meet, there's a small team of us that meets every Wednesday, mapping out the intersection of staffing, student course signups, enrollment, I mean, there's a lot of data. So, last year, we did, we did much better with hiring. We were, I would say, we were almost fully staffed when we opened school. We've already got authorizations out to hire special ed staff because there's, they're hard to find. I think learning from last spring, watching the difficult-to-fill areas, math was, was challenging, physics was challenging and Spanish was challenging. Elementary's relatively easy to fill. There's a lot of candidates with multiple subject credentials, so, so this list, you actually will see it roll every board meeting. And I'll have to, I'll, I'll get better acquainted with some of the annual data. We probably average about, I don't know, 15 to 20 retirements a year. And we have 800 teachers, so it's a pretty large workforce, so, yeah.
So, I just had a question with all this going on. You know, we, we ran into at the graduation ceremony, a teacher that had retired after 25, 30 years as being a special ed teacher. And we asked her, I, I think I asked her, I said, "Well, what, is there a follow-up with your retirement? Like, what could you give feedback with regards to the department and such?" And she said, at least, she said to me at the time, she said, "Well, no, I don't, I haven't really, you know, I'm, I'm just retired." I go, "Well, what about any feedback that you could provide? Because you've been here this long. What do you think the potential for, you know, what we could be working on and all that?" And she said, "Well, no one's really asked me that." And she goes, "I'd be happy to answer that question." So, I was just curious, is there anything like that in place? You know, to kind of, because I think in our, you know, this is a wealth of knowledge that somebody, and then they're just gone. So, I'm just curious.
We actually discussed this at last week's cabinet and HR team meeting, that we need to have an exit interview process because I personally wanna know why people leave. You know, if it's finances, I need to know that. If it's, you know, family relocation, I, I like hearing those stories. If it's, you know, "I'm mad at the district," I, I wanna hear that too. And I think the retirements, it's good to hear from people. It's like, you know, "What was great about your experience and what could we do better?" Now, we looked at each other and said, "Okay, who's gonna do all those exit interviews?" Honestly, I think our site administrators, our principals should do probably most of that because they have the relationship with people. I mean, the HR team doesn't possibly have the bandwidth to do that. We're not the right people. But, we are going to put in an exit interview process. I asked the HR staff to just build a really simple list of questions. "Let's just start collecting." People love to talk. They really do. I mean, just say, "Hey, would you like to talk about your experience here for 15 minutes?" You know, they'll go on and on, so, it's a great question.
Great. Thanks. So, we'll move to item number eight, Ms. Capps.
Yeah, I just wanted to flag this actually because I'm happy to see.
Sorry.
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we should vote.
We should vote.
Thank you. So, is there a motion?
Approval of human resources recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye, and that passes unanimously. So, we will now move to number eight, Ms. Capps.
Thank you. I pulled this out of support for this contract and wanted to flag for my colleagues on the board that this means that we get the advice of Capital Advisors, the group, the, the gentleman that we listen to at the CSBA. They are based in Sacramento, our former superintendent of education, Jack O'Connell. And they do, I just wanted to have a chance so that it wasn't just sort of folded into consent agreement, not because I have an issue with the contract itself, but they do briefings on the, on the state budget fairly often and I just was hoping, Mr. Chae, when you hear about them, that we could know about them as well. I've gone in the past and found them.
There's one already scheduled in January. I will forward that information to you.
So, yeah, so similar to what we heard there, they actually, when you are on, in contract with them, they come to you and they will do this for all the districts in the, the county and provide a really good budget briefing and sort of the political lay of the land, which I have found, found very helpful. So, I just wanted to flag it so that it doesn't slip under the radar.
Thank you, Ms. Capps.
So, I move to support the consulting and advocacy agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So, we'll move on to item J. Do we have any coming events that we would like to? Hear about?
I'll note that we're in the middle of the open house schedule for inter-district transfers. The deadline must be coming up quite shortly. When is the transfer deadline, Dr. Wagonick?
It is the 19th of.
19th of January.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to item K and I do, we have, I know we have a list somewhere, of future agenda items.
I have the list and I'm gonna transfer ownership to you.
Okay. Cause I'm like, "Where's the list? Where's the list?" So, I'd love to see the list. So, does anyone wanna add to the list? Yes, Ms. Capps?
I do wanna add to the list and it wouldn't have to be anytime in the short term, but I, this is on sustainability and I saw with pleasure that the solar panels have gone in and lost chloris. I know Mr. Yonk is not here. I know Mr. Yonk is not here, and this is also probably an item for Ms. Bianchi-Cleman, but there is such community enthusiasm for the fact that our district, for the first time ever, is using alternative energy, that I just want to make sure that, that the public is invited to understand sort of when and how that's happening. So, you know, we talked maybe about a, you know, actually, like a groundbreaking, or some sort of, I know that there, that there would be interest in that at the right juncture, or even a potential update when Santa Barbara Junior High, when plans are underway. I just want to flag that, and again, not let that go unnoticed, because I've heard from city council members, I've heard from the environmental community, that, that people are excited, and this is a good thing that we should communicate, and, and not just sort of go about our normal business of, of running schools with everything that's going on. But, so either in the form of, of an agenda item, maybe, when there is something significant in progress, significant to, to report on, or, and/or any kind of public opportunity to engage in this development.
All right. Thank you. So, we will move to item L. Just our next board meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd, our regular meeting. And if there's no objection, I am going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
Nice job.
Well done.
All right. All right.
Well done.